Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene City Council. So, since it's the Westminster redevelopment agency meeting. Right now, seven twenty-five P. M. Wednesday, June twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. Go call, please.
Yes, Mayor Ta.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Vice Mayor, I think you need to.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Do.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
And Councilmember Monso.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Next, we have a salute to the flag.
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, and invocation will be City Attorney, and please stand.
Who's doing the salute?
As member Ho.
Please stand and bring hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Father in heaven, we we thank you for the opportunity to come this night and conduct the city's business. We ask that you would be here with us. You would help the council as they consider the items before them, help them to make wise decisions for the benefit of the entire community, be with staff and even the members of the public as all of us seek to participate and do what is right and to do again to that which will be a blessing to this community. We commit the evening to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Ho and City Attorney. Next, we have report from City Attorney.
Yes, there was one item on the closed session. It was a potential litigation discussion concerning items related to the Tyler Dip contract. There is one thing to report out. After a discussion on the issues, the council made a motion by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Mayor Protim Nguyen, and the council voted five-oh, so all voted in favor to authorize the payment of the amounts that are owed under this contract with Tyler Dip. And then to move on, it was confirmed at that time that nothing has been paid to him as of this date. There were no checks had been paid. So council authorized the payment of seven thousand dollars for the month of April, the work that was performed during that month, and six thousand four hundred dollars for the month of May, for a total of thirteen thousand four hundred. The contract was subsequently terminated, so there is no further work that will be billed or paid, and that is that is all I will report.
Thank you so much, City Attorney. Next, we have expertise communication.
Before we continue, may I make a motion to walk in a emergency closed session meeting where I update this regular meeting to discuss anticipated litigation and the performance evaluation of our city manager.
A second. Okay, we have the motion and the second on the floor. Roll call vote.
Before you voted on it, this is an urgency item, so let me just mention that these require four votes in order to walk them on, and they must concern an item of urgency that needs to be addressed and can't wait till the next meeting. So with that, we have a motion and a second to add the two items.
Roll call vote.
Okay, so one more time, that was a motion made by Councilmember Do. Like you did by Councilmember Monso. Sorry.
Vice Mayor.
And before we vote, City Attorney, before we vote, I, no, no, can I speak? Something wrong here. I can't even. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, before we vote, I just want to state that this is, is it an urgency item that we need to resolve today? Secondly, the.
You're breaking up.
I think your voice has been breaking up.
Since four thirty, and I don't.
Vice Mayor, we could not hear you clearly. I think your voice has been broken up.
Know how long with this meeting is going on, and so, and so, you can hear me. So I, you know, it's going to be. Let me try it again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I don't know what happened. Can you hear me now?
Yes, you sound clear now.
I don't know what happened. I've been trying. Okay, before we vote on this item, I just want to state that, you know, number one, I don't know whether this is urgency enough that we have to have to walk it on today to discuss about it. Why not wait until the next meeting? The second, the reason for that is I had, Council Manzo and I had the meeting since four thirty today, and I don't know what, how long this meeting is going to be, and then we have to have another meeting right after that. I don't think this is the right idea to do it. By that time, we are dead already, and I don't know whether we can, you know, discuss about the item anymore. I'd rather have it next time so that we can better discuss about issues.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. However, we have the motion and the second on the floor. Roll call vote.
Councilmember.
Can I?
Sorry.
Well, yeah, just want to make a brief comment before we vote. There's some document that related to potential litigation, anticipated litigation that we're disclosing in the closed session meeting. I'd like to have an opportunity to read it, to understand what it is and discusses. So that's the reason why I walk it in, and this item, this is a potential litigation that we cannot, the city council cannot receive it personally, so it has to be discussed in a closed session, and we need to know what it is.
Mr. Attorney.
Thank you very much.
Mr. City Attorney.
About now.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead and start with the vote. I take it back. Go ahead.
Who would like to speak now? Is that Vice Mayor or City Attorney? Who would like to speak?
I have no other issues. Just go ahead.
So we have the motion and the second on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Do.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Let's just say something.
Councilmember Ho, you're muted.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
No.
Mayor Ta.
No.
Okay, so that motion fails three to two.
All right, so moving on, next we have auto communication.
So we actually still have.
We pop up, see you, love.
Thank you. So the only thing I have today is that it is Mosquito Awareness Week. So we are working with the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District to to promote that. So you'll see some of our our city vehicles around with some decals. So we're asking everyone to visit mosquitoesuck.org. We also have some goodies here at City Hall, some repellent and brochures and other information provided by the the district. We also have Adolfo Ozada, who is on the call right now, who will be providing updates regarding COVID.
All right, so next we have auto communication, please.
Actually, we have Adolfo.
Adolfo, plus.
Thank you, Christine.
I'm sorry.
No problem, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, members of the public. My name is Adolfo Ozada. I'm standing in for Robert Acosta, who's our emergency services coordinator. He's not able to attend tonight. So I have three topics I want to talk about. I'll be brief. The first topic has to do with the soft reopening of city facilities. The second topic is a little bit of information on CDC California's reopening and Cal OSHA. And the third topic has to do with a vaccination opportunity that's coming to the city of Westminster. So regarding the first topic, which is the soft reopening of city facilities, I didn't want to state something that's that's often, I think it's been confused by the by the public, and I want to make it very clear that the city of Westminster has provided effective customer service during the pandemic continuously. And we've never been closed. We've just had limitations as to who we can allow into City Hall. So over the course of the pandemic, we've we've handled the business electronically and through the telephone, and we expanded to by appointment only. And now we've also done limited in-person hours, and we had to revert back to electronic only and by appointment, and essentially now with the soft reopening, we're back to limited hours. So I did want to make that distinction that we have been open during the pandemic, trying our best to serve the public. Regarding the soft reopening of city facilities, it began on June twenty-first. City Hall and Community Services, our lobbies reopened on June twenty-first from seven thirty A. M. to twelve thirty P. M. for walk-ins, and we're still seeing people by appointments in the afternoon. For public works and community development, you can you can make an appointment through the Qless app that is available through our website. Our chief has decided to be in line with City Hall, so the police department is also open Monday through Thursday from seven thirty A. M. to twelve thirty, and also afternoon by appointment only. Family Resource Center, Monday through Friday, June, began on June twenty-first as well, nine A. M. to twelve thirty P. M. And they obviously conduct a lot of business also after the after these hours by telephone and and email. The senior center facility remains closed at this time. There's a lot of activities that are happening at the senior center, supporting our seniors. It's just not open for them to come back to the senior center at this time. Beginning July, Diana Daubert and her team are going to slowly bring back activities to the senior center. A more substantial reopening of the senior center will happen August second. And our Corporation Yard, they've been, they've remained open for the majority of the pandemic for walk-ins from seven A. M. to four thirty P. M. Monday through Friday. Moving on to the next topic, there's been some confusion regarding CDC guidelines, California reopening, and Cal OSHA. The Centers for Disease Control, CDC, essentially relaxed mask mandate on May thirteenth. So this is several months before the June fifteenth opening of California. So for some time, there was confusion because the news was reporting CDC guidelines, yet in California, we were still waiting for June fifteenth. Since June fifteenth, the governor has now also adopted the relaxed mask guidelines, in addition to which he's removed the color tier system that we've been tracking for the duration of the pandemic. The color tier system no longer is relevant in California, and there are no capacity limitations. So that's a little bit on CDC and then the California, June fifteenth. A little bit of confusion happened last week as after June fifteenth, CDC had not yet voted on their guidelines, and CDC essentially regulates the workplace. So this is a very important. There's about two days of confusion, being that on June fifteenth, California reopened, and it wasn't until June fifteenth, late into the evening, that Cal OSHA adopted their new standards. And that's very important because Cal OSHA oversees and regulates almost every workplace in California. I'm sorry, in California, that's correct. So the biggest thing to keep in mind as it pertains to Cal OSHA, their latest findings or their latest guidelines is that vaccinated employees no longer need to wear masks in the workplace. That's 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 the big thing that came out of it. In addition to that, employers, such as the city of Westminster, our Human Resources Department, employers are now responsible for keeping track of those employees that have been vaccinated. And we have started that process. We started that process yesterday through our H. R. Department, and businesses throughout California are doing the same. And that 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 covers my my update on on CDC, California, and Cal OSHA. The last thing I did want to share was a vaccine opportunity that's coming to the city of Westminster this Saturday, June twenty-sixth, between the hours of twelve and three P. M. at the Family Resource Center in Sigler Park. They're partnering with the Orange County Healthcare Agency to bring vaccines to the community. They are available for by appointment and walk-ins based on availability. That concludes my update regarding COVID nineteen. Thank you.
Well, really, I really want to thanks for your report with a lot of a lot of good information and detail. I have a question or so. Right now, member from the public, when they enter to the City Hall, are they required to wear masks or is it an honor system? It's mean that we don't, we never know that who will be vaccinated or not.
That's a very good question, sir. Thank you for asking that. At this time, members of the public who enter City Hall will be asked to wear a mask, and then City Hall employees that are greeting them at the counter will also be wearing a mask. That is, that is not a permanent position. That's just simply where we are right now. I would anticipate some additional information and modifications to this coming after the Fourth of July weekend. We'll be revisiting that as we move closer to a full reopen.
Thank you so much for your answer. Any question or concerns for members of the City Council before I open auto communication?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Adolfo, do we know how many vaccines are there going to be available at the Family Resource Center on Saturday?
You know, I don't know exactly the number, but I know that they're they're shooting for at least one hundred. One hundred represents a successful vaccine clinic for the county healthcare agency, so at the very least, they'll be bringing out a hundred.
All right.
And I think the importance of making the appointment, sir, now that you bring that up, is that if more people are making appointments for that clinic, they will bring out more vaccines as 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 is needed. So while you can walk up, going the appointment route allows them to prepare a little bit better for the event.
Do we know if there's been any appointments made?
You know, I haven't checked in with Diana on that. I'm not sure if she's if she has any information she can add at this time.
Yes, I'm here. Yes, so I believe we've made about thirty appointments thus far. So there are available, there is availability for people to still contact the Family Resource Center to schedule appointments.
Okay. Well, hopefully, we get some some walk-ups. Get some people back.
That'd be great.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for all your great, great work, guys.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any anything else from a member on the City Council for Adolfo? I see none, so open oral communication.
This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council on items on the agenda or non-agenda items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction. Members of the public who wish to address the city council had the opportunity to submit comments in writing up to twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. Those comments that were received via email were provided to the city council. They will be reflected in the minutes and will be read in full or in summary tonight during oral communications. Those who wish to verbally address the city council may speak via Zoom. At that time, I'll ask you to raise, at this time, I'll ask you to raise your hand, and I'll call upon you after I read the e-commerce. Tonight, I just want to make a couple of notes to make everyone aware. Staff has received nearly fifty e-commerce in the last forty-eight hours, with half of them being received in the last twelve hours. I will be reading them in summary tonight. Full text of the e-commerce are hyperlink to the agenda, and that's located on the city's website. E-commerce that were received by members of the public who wish to speak are included online as part of the record, but their comments will not be read tonight because they'll be speaking. Comments, there were, the comments that were received passed their twenty-four hour cutoff. You know, we have included those online, and we asked for twenty-four hours to get, you know, to have reasonable time to prepare. But unfortunately, anything received after two P. M. today will not be read, but they, again, are online, will be reflected in the minutes, and there were quite a few that were provided in Vietnamese. Those will be, you know, translated after the meeting and reflected in the minutes as such. With that being said, I have quite a bit of e-commerce to go through, and so, again, I will be reading those in summary. The first one is from Steve Sparks, the owner of Best Western Palm Gardens, Said Shaw, owner of Best Western Westminster Inn, Jeff Trung, owner of Quality Inn and Suites, and J. S. Bakata, owner of Hotel Thirty-nine. Basically, they are stating that the new hotel being built on Bosa and Brookhurst received over four point six million dollars of taxpayer money, and they're also getting a sixty-six percent tax break on occupancy for twenty-five years. These four hotel owners have stated that they've paid their taxes for over ten years and have never asked for special preferential treatment. The, and also stated the hotel was never on the general plan and was just, and was approved, justifying it as part of the needs of the city. There was also not an impact study towards other hotels. They'd like assurance that further preferential treatment will not be given to them, which would put them in a competitive disadvantage and ask that the city assign a point person for them to support their hotel needs. They also want assurance that the new hotel will be a five-star hotel as promised and not a lower level, which would have a competitive disadvantage. They'd also like to team up with the city for future issues like visitor guides and marketing to bring more visitors as well to the businesses. Okay, second comment, next one is from Erica Gibson, and she expressed support of flying the inclusion flag for Pride Month to support the LGBTQ community and stated that the community has been oppressed for so long and treated so poorly, and it's important to express support. Yvonne Barnett states, expressed opposition in displaying the flag and stated, asked that the city council not choose one segment of the community to elevate above all the rest. Said it's not the job of the city of Westminster to create this visible symbolic gesture. Said the city should always be conscious of the entire community of Westminster with its many different kinds of people. Also, out of the American flag itself speaks loudly and clearly for all, and those who want to represent their views to the public may have opportunities to do so. Free speech is our right, but please don't allow one particular group to have the sacred space of public, of the public square in the city of Westminster. This next one is from Tim Rissel and states expressed opposition in displaying the pride flag, saying that choosing to feature and memorialize one particular segment in the community is detrimental to the whole and opens up the flood, opens up the floodgates for every group to make a case to have specialized flags displayed on city property. Freedom of speech comes in many forms, and American citizens have the right to speak freely in many ways. They're free to display it in the context of their private lives. The American flag already represents unity and diversity, unity in diversity. If you approve this pride flag request, other groups will absolutely request the same for the specialized political agenda in the interest of inclusiveness. Stated that this would lead to more legal action, which the city does not need, and that one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all encompasses the truth for every citizen of the city and country and its wonderful diversity, and that's all that's needed. This next one is from Ruth Rutledge. She's expressing concern about the issue of displaying the pride flag. Stated that if you create a policy to allow unofficial flags, you're inviting other groups to request the same, such as those protected by the First Amendment, including the Confederate flag, Nazi flag, N. R. A. flag, and others. She added that the Pentagon confirmed this month it's not displaying the pride flag on a U. S. military basis, and seems that would be a wise move for city property as well. She added that the city, there would be resources, cost, and time to make, to take to see, the city resources in both cost and time that it would take to determine case by case, which is of which group is worthy for city council endorsement to fly or display a flag or banner. You, as the council, must take precaution not to enter the political quagmire of opinions and highlighting one particular entity with overt public displays of approval and publicity. She added that you leave public space to that which encompasses the freedom of views of everyone in Westminster. Americans find creative ways to freely express their views, and they don't need the city to bolster any particular view. Please note, Voe, on the proposed item. Next one's from Arthur Shaper, Shaper, on behalf of the organization of for mass resistance, and basically stated the proposal to fly the pride flag is offensive, aberrant, repulsive, and irrelevant, and that city government must not be bandy about banners on public property unless the theme and message speaks to and serves the needs of every resident. I stated the pride flag only represents a very small segment of the population. They stated that only three banners should fly over the government building, which is the American flag, the California flag, and the prisoner of war, you are not forgotten, flag, perhaps a fourth flag, which would be the official banner of the city of Westminster. And they're urging the council to adopt a binding ordinance in which only those flags will be allowed to fly on city property. Next one's from Claude Richardson, and it simply states, I oppose the flying of the LGBT flag and demand that you cease that practice. Christina Tenoco stated, expressed support of this item and that the annual display of a flag commemorating pride is a huge thing, and it increases the visibility of that community, its individuals, and promotes values important to the community, such as equality and dignity. Next one is from Dow Tran, and it states, I respectfully ask that you continue to uphold the monument for the victory of Quang Tri, and there's no good reason to discontinue this memorial after you've already passed it. Every war statue in Westminster went through opposition with very irrelevant reasons, and at the end, they were all built, and they're built because it's the right thing to do, just like this one. Just reject the personal issues by these objectors who did not get their way. That's from Dow Tran. Next one is from Robert Harrison, and it's states, as a Vietnam veteran representing the Vietnam War Memorial Committee and various Vietnam Veterans of America chapters, they've stated over and over that they've been, they've never been against the Vietnamese building monuments to honor and respect their history and culture, but the left-wing Vietnamese media representing the committee behind the Quang Tri monument are adding to the division that they've already created in the community and cancel culturing the American Vietnam veterans. It's stated in their media, an American Vietnam veteran is simply against the Paristale Island and Quang Tri monuments. But it's always been expressed, these monuments, museum and visitor center don't belong in Freedom Park. Furthermore, the Paristale monument is not a Vietnam War memorial monument. It has nothing to do with the Vietnam War and American Vietnam veterans. City of Westminster needs leadership representing this entire city, personal agenda items of the original Vietnam War memorial in Freedom Park that creates extensive division, including their own Vietnamese military branches and other ethnicities, and the American Vietnam veterans promoting themselves and friends does not comprehend the essence of the Vietnam War memorial. And that was from retired Bob Harrison. Next one is from Lan Wait, stating that, let's see, there's some veteran groups lobbying to delay or stop the Quang Tri monument in Westminster. That activity is unacceptable, and you must deny this irrational idea after voting to support it last year. Again, that's expressing support, support the community and get this monument built for the residents and for the future. This one's from Dr. Lisa Ann Berend, who owns a home in Westminster Village and is on the board for the Homeowners Association. She stated that there have been vehicle, that she's seen vehicle break-ins during the night hours increase steadily. Two vehicles were stolen early Sunday morning with an attempt for a third. She's aware that you can't stop most crimes, but would like to request some possible ideas to prevent future crime in the village. The, she stated that the officers that showed up to take the report and to view the ring videos were awesome, and she appreciates what they do to keep them safe. She's asking that cameras be put up on the light poles that surround the village. The streets and public streets are, belong to Westminster. They are owned of the village, asking that officers patrol more between the hours of twelve and four P. M. And if putting cameras around the village is not feasible, how about just at the three entrances to the village? And she's also interested in any other creative creative ideas that the city may have to help them. This one's from Min Do Ngap Ho, the, let's see, president of the Vietnam War Memorial in Westminster Midway City, states that our committee officers and advisors are totally against building the the building of monuments at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park. Said there was never any intention of building additional monuments from inception, and now second and third generation. from inception, and now second and third generation Vietnamese with their close friends are destroying the landscape of Freedom Park, proposing and building monuments to honor themselves with plaques. Please stop any further planning to building to build and construct the Quang Tri Victory Monument. This one's from Jessica Lasano, and she states, I support the state's support of the annual display of the pride flag. They've always been an important part of the city, and tragically, they face discrimination, prejudice, and hostility. Flying the flag would be a way to recognize, respect, and show support within our city, and that Westminster stands for equality, inclusion, and tolerance, and it's time to fly the pride flag to honor those in our community. All right. Okay, this one was received by Juan Juan Pham and veteran of the South Vietnam Republic. This was received in Vietnamese, so to paraphrase it, we'd like to have the following opinions, rebuild the monument of Quang Tri at a different place instead of putting it in Sid Goldstein area. Would like to wait for now in order to have the participation of many more associations and groups in SoCal and hopes that hopes that some of those participation participants from the veterans of the South Vietnam. This one's from Dominic Constas, and it says, I'm in favor of flying the pride flag at City Hall. This one's from Kim Bacon Gilbert, and she's expressing opposition of flying the pride flag stating if you agree to if you agreed to request flags, banners, or other special interest displays to be featured within the city's public space, you're opening Westminster with requests. This could include any number of political or social agendas, which tends to alienate and divide rather than unite. Said it's well intentioned to try to find ways to support the LGBT community, but displaying the rainbow colors on public grounds is not the way to do it. Stated government property is reserved to express freedom for all. People are free to find countless ways to express themselves, but high the high-flying stars and stripes in the American flag represent diversity and pro and proclaim unity as a free society. Please encourage private expression of political and social views and reject this proposal to promote the pride flag agenda in the city. This one's from Luigi Frisina, who would like the city to contact him. He would like to discuss ways the city can assist the community of Westminster Village to increase security and restore safety. Courtney Winford, also a resident of Westminster Village, stated that they are in dire need of more patrol cars in the neighborhood. There have been many vehicle break-ins and stolen vehicles, and these thefts are happening on a daily basis. They've also had an uptick uptick of vagrants wandering the street. The most active hour seems to be three to 5:00 AM in the morning, three to 5:00 AM. And they're begging for the city's help. Flanka Driscoll stated, she's speaking in favor of five of the pride flag. Says it's a wonderful sign of unity to drive by City Hall or anywhere in the city and see the symbol of love. The LGBT LGBTQ community needs support, not judgment. James Su would like to request the city council, see if any further construction of the Quang Tri Monument, and call for an at-large community meeting to resolve the many complaints and criticism against this project. Jake Ramirez is asking council to vote no on the pride flag, stating that the message of diversity and inclusion in the current culture is important, but flying the pride flag is ultimately a personal decision, should be left to individuals. The American flag is a symbol of unity, allowing ones one group's flag to be flown alongside. It means you'll also be expected to do the same for every other group out there, causing more division rather than unity. When it comes to public spaces, the message should always be unity. This is from Tin Tran, Secretary of the Coordination Center of the ARVN in Southwestern USA. States, I'd like to request the city council cease any further construction of Quang Tri Monument and call for an at-large community meeting to solve the many complaints and criticism against the project. This one is Reverend Richard Winter states his objections to flying a flag that celebrates pride. Says that the flag caused division in society and deepens divide. As a community, we would seek to unite and not bring groups, group theory, racism, gender, or preferences to compartmentalize one belief over another, so we could be proud. He urges you to remain firm in your conviction. We are all united under one flag and don't need any other flag to be proud. States that when you give such rights to one, you have to set a precedent, and who knows what we will be asked to be proud of next. Pride flags have never been flown over any of our civic structures. This one's from Chang Fong, former Army Officer of South Vietnam, requesting that the current Quang Tri Monument be put on hold until it can be broadly reviewed and agreed majority by especially the Little Saigon Vietnamese community and the Coalition of Former South Vietnamese Soldiers Associations in the area. States the monument's about thousands of South Vietnamese soldiers of all branches sacrificed to recapture the city of Quang Tri in 1972 and cannot be just built as a picture on a small stone wall. It should be on, it should be honored in a three-dimensional statue sculpture with at least three to five meters in height. This one's from Harry Nguyen, an Army veteran of the Republic of South Vietnam. Fully supports the construction of the Quang Tri Victory Monument. However, there's a public disagreement regarding the working relationship between the Quang Tri Victory Foundation and the large veteran organizations in Southern California, namely the Vietnamese Veterans Association of Southern California, Coalition of Former South Vietnamese Soldiers Associations, and the Vietnamese Veterans of America. Just as this foundation did not consult with the Quang Tri Association, or which represents war victims born and raised in that province. He respectfully respectfully requests that the city council temporarily stop the construction until the Quang Tri Victory Foundation establishes a public meeting with other veterans associations to resolve differences before the project can proceed. This one, and this is the last one I'm actually going to read, is from Monique and Line Nguyen, and it states that she and her husband are in support of of the Quang Tri Monument. There's no reason to go back on something that the whole council approved. Six months ago, the Quang Tri Foundation got the approval and the funding to build it. So they're asking for to support the community and get this monument built in a timely manner without delays. So those are all the ecomments that I've received up till 2:00 PM. Like I said, the ones that have been received after 2:00 PM are currently posted on the website, and those that have been received after 5:00 PM, they will be posted tomorrow morning as part of the record. That being said, that's it for ecomments, and we do have requests for verbal comments at this time. So first speaker for well, first speaker. And there we go. First speaker is Van Tran. Mr. Tran.
Yes, good evening. Can you see me? Can you see me?
Nope.
Okay, so.
Yeah, every, yeah, we won't be able to see you.
All right, that's unfortunate. Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Van Tran, and I represent the Quang Tri Victory Foundation. I understand all the issues that are being raised, and that's why we have a very, very compelling response, statement to some of the critics, and I would like to read the Quang Tri Victory Foundation's official statement tonight for the record to the city councils as well as the public, if I may. The foundation would like to take this opportunity to address the monument's opposition led by Garden Grove resident Robert Harrison and a few other individuals in collie in collusion with various political opponents, whose members are abusing their organization's names and mission statements to carry out their own agendas. And now, after months of lobbying and cajoling a number of individuals of Vietnamese community, Mr. Harrison is claiming that the community is against the monument, citing that 17 veteran organizations have come out against it, some of which have submitted letters to you tonight. What type of entities are these? What status are they in, and who are managing them? The deception falls apart with just a simple check on their legal and tax filing status for the California Secretary of State and the Franchise Tax Board. A background study of these 17 Vietnamese groups, which also include a community, a community group with a grand sounding title headed by a Mr. Fat Buoi, another Garden Grove resident, and an avowed opponent of council members Tree Ta, Kimberly Ho, and Charlie Nguyen, reveal a disturbing reality with at least two-thirds of these groups. According to reports from the California SOS and the F T B, seven groups out of the 17 are either listed as dissolved or suspended, including the group Buoi currently heads. Another four could not be found anywhere with these agencies and are likely not registered with the state authorities. And most comical, one of the name opponents of the project and another Garden Grove resident, Mr. Richard Buidap, listed himself as representing not one, but three different groups of Vietnamese veterans opposing the project all at the same time. Two of these groups are not even registered and have no legal standing with the state. This opposition is driven by misplaced passion, emotion, personal grudges, and jealousy. It's no secret that Mr. Fat Buoi, a political ally of Bob Harrison, is an established opponent of several members of the foundation board. It is also known that some key members of these local Arvin groups are sympathetic to an ill-fated campaign to recall Mayor Ta, council members Ho and Nguyen in the 2020 Westminster recall election. They were defeated in the recall campaign and fail again in unseating these council members less than seven months later in the 2020 November election. These Arvin groups have recycled old allegations that the foundation had repeatedly addressed in detailed writing on the airwaves and also in direct conversations with these individuals. Incredibly, six months after the monument is approved and three months before its completion, they now come out to oppose its construction. This action is reckless. The construction of the Quang Tri Monument is fully contracted, and the vendors are busy finishing it, moving full speed ahead as permitted by law. The city council had unanimously approved this project over six months ago. The foundation is slated to unveil this monument on September 18, 2021, less than three months from now, and in time for the 49th anniversary of the Arvin Victory in Quang Tri. Any 23rd hour attempt by anyone or any organization to politically interfere or disrupt with the construction and unveiling of this historic structure is unacceptable. The foundation and its numerous supporters and sponsors will not sit idly by and will take any and all action necessary, legal and political, to protect this project from falling victim to political gamesmanship from anyone. However, the foundation continues to make an effort to reach out to any critics to impress upon them that this monument project is much more important than any one group or individual, and that they should shut their factional biases and personal grievances and join hands in the common effort to build this monument. The foundation has its doors open to supporters and opponents alike, and constructive ideas to improve this project are always welcome. The true bravery of Arvin soldiers must be told. The community expect no less, and the next generation deserves better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jody Boyd. Jody.
Hi, good evening again, everybody. This is Jody Boyd from Westminster, and you know what? I agree with every word that Van Tran said. All of these monuments that various groups are placing or wanting to place at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park, it's just out of control, and it's creating so many problems. And I've asked before for the city council, for somebody on the council to place an agenda item that, number one, we need a temporary moratorium on the construction of any and all further monuments at Sid Goldstein Park. So we need to get a moratorium in place, and number two, we need to take a look at the city's five-year plan, because there's nothing on it about Sid Goldstein Park and the placing of additional monuments and parks and recreation are part of our city plan. So we seem to be going against our very own city plan. Further, we need to, as a community, and you know, as our city council and mayor, we need to all come together and figure out what is the best and most fair way to proceed with the placement of any monuments or acknowledgements at Sid Goldstein Park? Because keep in mind, what cuts in favor of one group is going to have to cut in favor of another group. And I'd be happy to propose and raise money to erect a plaque in recognition of all of the gay and lesbian and bisexual and transsexual soldiers who served in the Vietnam conflict. And they were there, and they had stories to tell when they came back. So if we're going to honor anyone and everyone who had anything to do with that war or any conflicts, I will be more than happy to raise the money for a placement of a monument for our gay soldiers. The second thing that I want to talk about is regarding item 5.5, the resolution authorizing the annual display of a pride flag. I'd like to educate people that this is not a personal preference or, you know, personal thing, flag. In fact, June is Gay Pride Month in the entire state of California, and this is something that was in place by the governor. So you know, this is a legal action. And it would be terribly unfair if you do not know somebody who is gay, whether or not you personally believe in it. Then, you know, you don't really understand. We are people just like you. We have the same aspirations. We have the same beliefs in our community. We have suffered deeply from discriminations, from not being able to just be who we are and basically lying through a mission of what we don't tell people. Well, everybody that knows me that know that I'm gay, and it would be pretty hard to hide. So I am here in support of the flying of the gay flag during the month of June and to defray any costs or expenses from the city, I will volunteer to be the one to purchase and donate the pride flag to the city. I will follow up for the size and specifications that you would like, and I will purchase the flag from a gay organization within Orange County. Next, I'd like to follow up on item 5.2, the policy of placement of items on the agenda. Again, we have a complete lack of transparency, especially regarding the status of these requests and the outcomes.
I have seconds left.
I want the same amount of time that Van Tran just got. And I want to bring forward the example that on January 13, 2021, Kimberly Ho brought forth a request for a placement of an agenda item regarding the reservation of beds in homeless facilities. We need someplace to take these homeless individuals who have agreed to accept help 24 by 7 by 365. I have started going out on my own, doing my own outreach, my own counts. And as Roland Perez and Commander McCormick will back me up, I had a homeless woman sitting on the sidewalk. She was crying for her mother. She was scared to death to spend a night on the streets, and she was young and vulnerable. And I called the police, and there was nothing that they could do.
It's a pretty boy thing that you have.
How much time?
And on Van Tran.
Time did Van Tran get? Because you need to start listening to the people, not your ally.
City Club? Can you speak? Because you know, you are the person who do all the timing, City Club.
Van Tran got seven minutes.
You get more than seven. You get more than seven minutes.
No, I haven't.
I don't think Van got more than five minutes. I don't believe that.
Because you're in his pocket. Come on.
No, I think your time is.
I do more for this.
Please, your time is up.
All right.
Your time is up.
Buddy.
Ma'am.
Bye-bye.
For the record, City Clerk, the time that Van Tran spoke, was it under the five-minute limit?
Impossible. I don't believe it because I timed it here and I'm sure that Terry Rains did too.
It's me, I think.
So our timer, our timer that we have in the council chambers going on clocked him at five minutes and ten seconds.
So he went over.
He went over, but we also gave you over as well.
Okay.
Next speaker is Fat Buoi. Mr. Buoi?
It's on me, I think. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening, honorable mayors and council members of the Westminster City. My name is Fat Buoi. I would like to request the council to put the Quang Tri Monument Project on hold as over the past few months, there have been so many outcries from the committee, especially from the Vietnam veterans and the Vietnam War veterans of America. Such a monument to honor the R V N A here in Westminster, yet not a single Vietnamese veteran associations support the committee and all have opposed the design and the location of the monument. I base my request in consideration of the Republic announcement of the coalition of Vietnamese veteran associations of Southern California, date June ninth. Number two, the public announcement of the Assembly of Vietnamese Veterans Overseas San Kho Kho Dino for Southwestern State of USA dated June tenth. The public announcements by the National Vietnamese Marine Association and also the Vietnamese Marine Association in Houston and vicinity. And countless of emails of Vietnamese veterans all over the world that I have received throughout March, April, May and June. We agree to the objections and the recommendations raised in the above public statements. The Quang Tri Monument has so many critical flaws due to the fact that it had been planned and designed in secrecy without consultation with the Veteran Association in Southern California, especially with ranking officer who had fought in this battle, many who has, many who currently reside in Westminster City and nearby. In summary, the major concerns to date are, one, the design have many critical flaws such as the use of stage photo that violate the flag protocol with an unusual large flag being raised on a pile of crumble rock, parrot it laying on the ground. This is a huge disrespect to our national flags. Nowhere on the monument did it list the name of the units that fought in the battle, yet it lists the names of elected official organizer and donors, causing many to think that the committee, the foundation, had sold so cheaply the soldiers sacrificed for their own glory. And then number two, the board of director include Mr. Allenford, a person who had went on official trip organized by the Communist Vietnamese State Department and their navy. Mr. Fa accompanied the Deputy Secretary of State and was seen smiling, shaking hands and presenting him to him an envelope of unknown amount of cash. Mayor and council members, this monuments as well as others should have been planned, designed and implemented carefully through community outreaches with transparency and with the involvement of the Vietnam Veteran Associations in Southern California and including the Vietnam Veterans of America should it be built on the Freedom Park. In fact, the Vietnam War Memorial was built in nineteen nineties, was led by the Vietnam Veterans of America, chapter ten twenty-four and the Coalition of R V N A Veterans Associations. The Huang Sa Monument by Khu Lang on Navy Association and the Five General Monument by the Coalition of R V N A Veterans Associations. You know, once it is built wrongly, it will be very difficult to correct the flaws and that may reigns pain on the veterans as well as criticized by future generations. And all as of June tenth, twenty twenty-one, the Quang Tri Victory Foundation does not yet have the five oh one secret non-profit status. State website confirmed their status as not exempt. Yet they did not disclose that they do not have five oh one secret status when raising funds as required by law.
You have thirty seconds.
The Vietnamese American Federation of California therefore requests Western City Council to temporarily pause the Quang Tri Monument Project, open public hearings to gather input from the community, especially from the veterans. Hand the implementation of this project to the Vietnamese Veteran Association in Southern California and in Westminster. Thank you and sincerely.
All right, next speaker is Tony Buoi. Tony Buoi. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Tony Buoi, City Resident of the City of Westminster. Would like to bring up my opinion on the concerning the monument that the city has been approved by unanimously five to zero to build the monument. And I don't know why, after a long time, then you come up to the situation that you had to try to bring up the issue and try to revoke, to abolish it. That is shameful for the decision of the group of people who represent for the city residents of Westminster. It will be waste money and time for all of our community. A year ago, two years ago, City of Westminster has waste a lot of money to for defending the impeachment of one of our sign people try to impeach three of our people in City of Westminster. How much has it cost our city? Five hundred million dollars. Who has to pay for it? That is our Westminster residents. Therefore, I strongly ask the City of Westminster or their attorney carefully give the cost of that issue to the people who has create that problem, who has to incur that cost. And I know that Mr. Buat is one of the accomplice, complicity of Mr. One Q who had create problems to our city. Therefore, it has to be responsible to pay back the cost of our turmoil in our city. And Mr. Buat, he is one of the City Council of Garden Grove. Therefore, he should go back to Garden Grove City and my his own business over there and let our people of Westminster in peace and in unity rather than division. Thank you very much. God bless all of you. God bless America.
Thank you, sir. Next, next speaker is Samuel.
Hi, thank you so much, everybody. Good evening. My name is Samuel Timothy. I live in Fountain Valley. However, I grew up in Westminster and called it home for over twenty years. I still work and shop there to this day. Also, as of today, I've officially been married to my wife Sarah for two years. So yay, happy anniversary. Now, getting to city business, I'm deeply concerned about measure five point five for putting up a pride flag during the month of June in perpetuity. I understand the idea is to show support for a community, but it is dividing political statement. I like to remind the council that in two thousand eight Californians passed Proposition Eight, which effectively banned gay marriage in California. And so even if, even if opinions have changed since then, it demonstrates how this is a political matter and, and how fast the general opinion of people can change. Putting up a political statement at City Hall banner or flag using taxpayer dollars for a political message sets a precedent of all sorts of political flags or banners. Now everyone can now ask for their flag to be put up. And if you deny all but this one, then you will set the city up for lawsuits. If you accept some and not others, you set the city up for lawsuits. And if you accept them all, then the city may literally have to have a person designated for receiving flag puller pet requests. The City of Westminster's financial situation right now where they're, they're trying to maintain without increasing taxes and not going through extreme financial hardship. I don't think a secretary of political flags is a good use of resources. And with also, I'd like to note that opinions change, just as in two thousand eight it changed versus now. So what if future councils have a different idea of what political flags and groups should be supported? Maybe we should put up the B L M flag or maybe somebody will put up a MAGA flag. Perhaps, perhaps some Southerners will move in and say, let's put the Confederate flag or maybe a Christian group wants to put up their flag. Perhaps a Muslim group, Buddhist, God forbid neo-Nazis somehow take over the council and say, okay, Nazi swastika right at City Hall. How about instead of Westminster trying to act like the United Nations of political causes, let's go with the flag that encompassed all our beliefs in themselves? The flag of the United States of America, the flag of the great state of California, the universally accepted, accepted good flag of P O Ws and of course, the flag of the great city of Westminster. These flags fly because, because our country stands for First Amendment rights. So people can put, can support the speech on private and private and public businesses as they see fit. And the P O W flag represents the men and women who died to ensure that right. This is a beautiful thing, people showing their opinions, but bringing the city into the fray imbalances the matter. Please avoid this Pandora's box that will cost taxpayer dollars. It will divide the city with essentially turning City Hall into a billboard and it opens up Westminster to financial hardship in perpetuity. I again implore you, please vote no on measure five point five. Thank you so much for your time and God bless you all and God, God bless Westminster and God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tommy Nguyen. Tommy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Tommy Nguyen. I've been living in Westminster over twenty years. I'm calling today to speaking on the favor of the monument of Quang Tri. At the second generation, I think the monument is a great way to preserve the history for our future generation, also to honor the Army of the Republic of Vietnam, with my father, my uncle are part of the military. I know that the project already approved like last December, but I've been waiting and hopefully you can see the monument to be built soon on time. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on a second. I saw Adolfo, he raised hand. Our, our staff, Adolfo, right? Is that he raised hand? Adolfo?
I'm sorry, Mayor, that was a.
Miss click on my part. Okay. Okay, no problem.
Okay, so let's see that. So that includes the pre-requested. You're going to go down the list. So at this time, if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay. Roger Minjum? Roger?
Hello, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Seems like it's been a little while since I've spoke to you all, so I hope you all have been well. Thanks for all your service. I really expected by now that we would be going back to live meetings or at least the council and staff based on the C D C guidelines, based on the governor's new guidelines, based on the report that Adolfo had read out. Why are we not live by now? And hopefully we will by next meeting. Please tell me that the next meeting will be live in some way or another. If you feel like the city council chambers are too small, I know we have larger rooms. Other cities around here have been doing live meetings for quite some time now, so let's get it together. Next point with the economic situation that we all recognize that we, that'll only continue to get worse and reading the minutes and the some status from the last meeting that you're moving forward with new hiring of at least two positions. I really don't feel like we need an assistant city manager right now. I think other people just need to step it up. With the economic situation we have, we're going to be laying off employees. So I think that needs to be rethought out. And I don't believe the city can afford any more pay raises either as far as that comprehensive study that was paid for. And it sounds like everybody wants to keep up with the next city of, of competitive pay and you ask any Joe citizen and they're going to tell you that you're all paid pretty, pretty well so far. So a lot probably getting to a point where you're getting paid a lot more than the constituents that you're serving. So I think you need to cool out on that. Next topic regarding the council members' interaction with city staff. Come on, people, we've gone through this like two years ago, right? And you've had people like Vice Mayor Nguyen, you know, blocking at it and opposing that for the last two years. It's really simple. You go through the city manager. And if he gives you okay, you can go to the department head, but there's no reason why you should be going to anybody lower than a department head for anything. I don't understand what the confusion is on that. Next subject regarding the Sid Goldstein Freedom Park. When does it end? What is your vision for the next five to ten years? Hearing Van Tran speak, if you're listening right now, man, you're a pond scum. You don't even, you don't even deserve the right to speak to regarding Mr. Robert Harrison. That man served our country and, and fought hard to protect our freedoms and, and everything that it stood for. And you're always divisive, always condescending. You're just lazy pond scum. I just can't stand to hear you, hear you talk. Every single time you come in the city council meeting, you're negative. You're disparaging to all these people. You take everything personally. Find another place to put all these monuments. These people who are opposing the monuments, especially Mr. Harrison, oppose it because of the sovereignty of that park that he helped build and create. And you're just diluting it. You're diluting the sacredness that other people designed that in a way to be. And you're just going to clutter it with all these monuments. I'm not speaking down about any of these monuments. If you want to have monuments, find another place for them. You're just going to dilute it. Imagine what it's going to look like with twenty-five different monuments around that park. It's ridiculous. Next subject, does anybody else love all the street racing that goes around here? Why is our police department not setting up on streets and stopping, slowing people down in the street racing? My particular area, I live pretty close to two, not really even busy streets, but apparently they're popular with the street racers because people are going all the way through the gears, full, full throttle. You know, they're hitting eighty miles an hour on McFadden, Brookhurst, Bouchard, my area that I live on, and it's got to be going on all over the place. What's going on? How many, how many citations are being written for these loud exhaust and the excessive street speed and reckless driving? Get some cops out there, set up in some areas. Get some cops out there, set up in some areas. And get people slowing down and quieted down around here because it's pretty disturbing. All right, that's my rant. Thanks very much. Hope you all have a good night evening. Don't stay up too late. Bye.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is. Wah Pham?
Hello, uh, everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is Wah Pham. I am the president of the Unknown Soldiers Group. Strategic Technical Director, Republic of Vietnam. I am a live member of the Vietnam Veterans of America, VVA. Live member of the US Special Forces Association, SFF, uh, SFA. And a live member of JFK Special Warfare Association. Also a live member of the. Uh, Special Operations Association, SOA. And also I am uh one of the uh. The people. The first people. Uh, work in the project of Vietnam War Memorial in Westminster with. Mayor Frank Five from the beginning to the end, uh, seven years. Honorable mayor and uh city council, I have followed the local. News about the construction of the Victory Monument Quan Chi in nineteen seventy-two. This one is the most important. And um, next year. Uh, twenty twenty-two uh will be a fifty years commemoration of the. Quan Chi Victory. One of the the biggest battle in the Vietnam War. And this monument will be. Dedicated to all the Vietnamese uh soldiers and uh allied soldiers. Fought and die in the Vietnam War. I have heard many of the uh. And most of them, uh, if I remember correctly, they all been trying to recall the city of Westminster. And um. The opponent of this monument is very minor, very few people. But they compare to the many supporter uh to the monument. Uh, please keep your support monument strong and my support for you will be strong also. Do not make any mistake by trying to delay this monument. This is no reason. The community one is now, it's have been long overdue already. It will. You, if you delay this project. My family have supported the council decision. For their better and no change at this time. Please, no game and no politics. You have passed it. And you should leave the coding group and to finish the project. Thank you for your understanding.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Amy Walsh.
I didn't expect to be going this quickly, sorry. I was busy checking social media. Uh, I wanted to uh touch base on a couple of things that I've already heard in regards to public comments earlier. Um, I'm. I tend to not um speak up unless something is uh, you know, really upset me or move me and I'm just. You know, I keep hearing these people saying that, you know, putting the pride flag up will create division and that kind of thing, and. That's all I've heard tonight is division, division, division. And it just, it it makes me sick to my stomach. Uh, you know, I'm, I would consider myself an ally. I have friends and family who are of the LGBT community. And. It, it really saddens me. That in this city that is supposed to be the all-American city and like the melting pot. And. I feel like we can't go places and do things with people that I love because they're going to be persecuted. Um.
Don't cry, don't cry.
My, my son's telling me not to cry. Um, it just, it really does sadden me that. I, this is the city that we live in and these are our neighbors. It is very upsetting. Thank you, Ellen. Um. Uh, not, I, I personally feel like. We should be promoting uh pride. I know a lot of our fellow cities, uh, neighboring cities, cities do that as well. I'm okay, I'm okay. Um, Seal Beach just had its first pride parade, which went amazing and was put in the news all over the place. Uh, I had family from back east that talked about, hey, aren't you close to Seal Beach? And I said, yeah, you know, that's, that was great. The police took part in it. I mean, it was. I feel like Westminster has such an opportunity to be involved in these things that. I I don't understand why we're not. Um, I'd also like to touch on the fact that uh earlier when we were uh. Or when a Thai Joe had asked for um an extension for the closed session, you know, in addition to that kind of thing. Thank you. Um, that we, I I feel like. If the council is meeting once or twice a month. And obviously your constituents, you know, come out in droves to speak at these meetings, and that's why the meetings go so long. I would think that. As a mayor or city council, I would want to put my all in. And if it takes another fifteen minutes at the end of the meeting tonight. To make sure that. Uh, no other um. Oh, trying to think of a nice word, way to put it, foul ups happen in regards to contracts and whatnot. I would think that that would be a good idea. You know, save us some money. I don't know. Here's another idea. Maybe take that money that was. Sent to uh the person that, you know. Had a contract, uh. I guess, put in. I I don't know how to word it, and I'm not gonna try. My point is, is that maybe that money should be taken out of that person's salary. Uh, instead of, you know, just eating some more money out. I just, I feel like. Uh, it, we're just being so fiscally irresponsible. And I, and the last thing I want to touch on really quick is the fact that each time I have been able to come to a meeting. Or, you know, even online to Zoom. I end up always hearing. It's like the Van Tran and Fat Bowie Show. And there are friends that come in support of them. And I just, I can't anymore. Like, I, we have many other things going on in our city. Aside from a monument, and I'm not saying that that's not important. I'm really not. But I feel like there's. A, a great handful of other important things that should be taken the priority. Um, and basically just kind of get thrown to the wayside. And I really do feel like we need to look at the um. The way things are being put on the agenda, because I'm sorry, but the way it was before. Uh. Uh, the way it was before was a lot easier. And it ensured that more things were being put on the agenda, whereas now it's basically. Only if certain people wanted on the agenda will it make it pass. And. What, real quick, thank you to Kimberly Ho. Cause you're stepping up and I'm loving it, girl. Keep on fighting the fight and doing what. You should be doing and. You have, you, I, you are making a fan of me. I'm just saying. Let's, let's keep up the good work and still, still do the right thing. Okay, girl? Thanks. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening. Well, the last two council meetings were very intense to watch, but I hope the city is finally beginning to head down the right path. Towards transparency and accountability. The public rightfully expects and demands both from our elected officials and city staff. Please pull item three point six and ask CityNet to make a presentation on the May Homeless Report. The bad news encounters are way down. The good news, street exits were way up. Per the P day, we can expect a more detailed and useful report beginning later on this summer. Please support item five point one, allowing the public to pull consent calendar items for separate discussion by council. Thank you, Councilman Manzo, for putting this item on the agenda. On a related note, I would like to see council vote unanimously tonight to place an action item on the next agenda to discuss the city's. Public comment policy and provide direction to staff to draft a new ordinance to overhaul the process. I have looked at what other cities are doing and discussed some ideas with staff and members of the community. And the consensus is that the city needs to do a better job of encouraging public participation and being transparent and responsive to the community. My suggestion would be to allow general public comments at the beginning of the meeting not related to specific agenda items, and then allow public comments throughout the meeting. For each agenda item as it is heard. An example might be four minutes per speaker for general comments, and then three minutes per speaker for each agenda item. Most speakers will not use their full time and most will only speak once. If there are a lot of public speakers for a particular item near the end of the agenda, council should move that item up earlier to the meeting, in the meeting. Remember, our voices are just as important as yours. Thank you, Councilman Doe, for putting item five point two on the agenda. The current policy requiring three affirmative votes for any council member, except the mayor. To place an item on an upcoming agenda is just as ludicrous now as it was back in twenty nineteen, when the three of you voted to adopt it. In a blatant attempt to silence the then council minority. And by extension, their constituents. No more. Tonight, vote for democracy. Eliminate this absurd, undemocratic policy and restore each council member's individual right to truly represent their constituents and bring forward items that are important to them. This, plus Councilwoman Ho's recent clarification regarding timing of placement of council member requested agenda items. Will go a long way in restoring democracy to this council. Thank you, Councilman Ho for, Woman Ho for putting item five point three on the agenda. I am interested in hearing your thoughts on this matter. Most generalities, general law cities like Westminster have adopted a council manager form of government. But let's be clear here. Council members should only contact department heads for information, but never individually direct order or pressure. Staff to do anything. Council direction must always go through the city manager and be done publicly. Some department heads and other city staff are very intimidated by elected officials and certain members of this council take full advantage of that. It is wrong and it must stop now. Why is item uh nine, the city manager report near the end of the agenda, always skipped? The city needs to move that item up to the beginning of the agenda right after the city attorney report, and the mayor must always call for this item at every meeting. Regarding the Quan Chi Monument groundbreaking event on June sixth, Mayor Ta and Vice Mayor Wen, you should be ashamed of yourselves. You didn't invite your fellow council members to attend the event, even though this is a city-approved project on city-owned parkland. You did not get a park use permit or even informed staff exactly what you had planned. You, you two, along with others in your group, have managed to insult and upset. Over seventeen local veteran groups. Yeah, you know, the people who actually fought in this war. You apparently planned the event back in April, yet Vice Mayor Wen only called city staff just two days before the event on a Friday. When City Hall is closed, demanding access to the park restroom, park restrooms, kiosk and electricity on Sunday. Unfriggin believable. After the event, your gang's godfather, Van Tran, wrote a long rambling letter trying to do damage control, but he only dug your hole deeper. And tonight, he did the same thing, try, and he was being. I like Roger's definition. I won't repeat it. But talk about divisive. You know, get a grip. Uh, this is, this is nothing uh new for you two, though, uh, Charlie and Tree. Remember the big march on city streets and the chaotic rally that took place at a local school, unpermitted and secretly organized. I am advising you both, you are not above the law. No one on this council is, and I would strongly suggest you stop trying to circumvent the law. And also tr- stop trying to intimidate staff. Otherwise. There will be serious consequences. You can bank on that. And I appreciate all the public comments on the pride flag. Um, it is not just a Westminster or not just a California thing. The President of the United States issued a proclamation on June first, and in that he encouraged all agencies and individuals. To uh celebrate the month. It's one month to celebrate the month and um. I, I, it is not what a lot of people are putting forth in their comments, in my opinion. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Camilla Overbeek.
Can you hear me, Christine?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Camilla Overbeek, ordained, ordained minister and resident of Westminster. I'd just like to say that I'm in full support of flying the pride flag for the month of June. It is beyond time for the city to be inclusive and supportive. Also, for any council member or community member who believes doing so is quote-unquote political. I'd like to remind everyone that being lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, or queer is not political. It is human. Supporting underrepresented and marginalized community members is always the right choice. Furthermore, I currently have a brand-new pride flag that I'm willing to donate to the city for the remainder of this month. If you so choose to vote in favor of this item. And I will bring it to City Hall tomorrow, so it can go up. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Last speaker is Claudia Steinmech, unless I have anyone else who would like to raise their hand. Claudia?
Hi, good evening. Hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, council members and staff. My name is Claudia Steinmech, and I am a Westminster resident. I spoke at the last council meeting and I'm thankful for the swift action to agendize this item. It doesn't take more than a Google search to figure out why mass resistance is in opposition of item five point five. This is a radical, out-of-state organization with a P O box in Massachusetts. Their leader, Arthur Shaper, is an extremist failed politician that doesn't even live in Westminster. Ask yourself, why does he or his followers care what our city is doing? Why are non-residents dictating or having a stake in our city business? Narrow-minded ideologies and the hate this organization spews for human beings is unspeakable. Mr. Shaper's ignorance of the Kinsey scale and the Clyde grid don't surprise me. As his views of a group of demographics he has no interest in becoming educated on. Or to put lightly ironic, this group seeks to create division as they are popular for meddling in other cities' business. As a volunteer and member of the Orange County Four District PPA Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force, I worry about our community youth. These types of hate groups and uneducated individuals continue to aid in the number of LGBTQ youth who attempt suicide each year. According to the CDC, LGBTQ youth are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to heterosexual youth. The US Department of Health states these higher rates may be due to discrimination, bias, family rejection, and other stressors associated. How they are treated because of their sexual identity or gender identity expression. Additionally, due to family rejection, LGBTQ youth today are still at a much greater risk of becoming homeless. And their non-LGBTQ peers, sadly, LGBTQ youth comprise forty percent of all youth experiencing homelessness. While they are just seven percent of the total youth population in the United States. Let's be a city that works to decrease these statistics. The staff report submitted clearly states that there is no fiscal impact related to this item. Let me say that again. No fiscal impact. Let Westminster stand as a city of inclusivity, of standing against hating your neighbors. And actually partnering with our adjoining cities to currently fly a pride flag. A flag that is flown for thirty days out of the year isn't going to harm anyone. The pride flag stands for equal civil and human rights. It's not a decoration. It can be a sign of solidarity in the lives of those who are constantly marginalized. It can be a beacon of hope for our residents, and it's a genuine opportunity to celebrate love. Because love is love is love. You cannot politicize love. Happy Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the last call for speakers. Okay. This is. Or not. There we go. No, Hung Trin?
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Yeah. Did you hear me clearly?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. You know, my name is a Hung Trin. There's a farmer's marines of ARVA and. I cannot let a fake soldier like a Mr. Boyfart to speak for me. Or anyone else. Because he's not a longer chairman. or anyone else, because he's no longer chairman of the United American Federation of Southern California. The monument is for me, for my Marine friends, not for the fake soldier like a Mr. Boyfart. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, last call. And I see none.
All right, so we don't have any other speaker on Zoom, so I'd like to close auto-communication. Next, we have consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members or city council or staff request that specific item be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action or discussion.
I'd like to pull item 3.6 for report.
All right.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item 3.2 as well.
All right. All right, so may I have a motion?
I'd like to motion to approve the consent calendar, except for 3.6 and 3.2.
I'll say. We have a motion and second to approve the consent, but two items to be pulled, 3.2 and 3.6, roll call vote.
Yes, roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manso?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
So now we have item 3.2.
Good evening, mayors, Vice Mayor and a member of council. We have Adolfo Ozada, the interim assistant to the city's city manager and the transportation manager here with us tonight, so who will present this item? No, go ahead.
Thank you. Item 3.2 tonight is the staff is asking that the city council support memorandum of understanding number C-02440 with the Orange County Transportation Authority. I provided a little bit of background on this project. There is an active memorandum of understanding that was implemented a few years back in order to proceed with the Brookhurst Signal Timing Project. We are, we, a little bit of background on signal timing projects, we are, we are the most, one of the most connected cities in the county. We have fiber optic communication to every single traffic signal. And we partner with other cities along major corridors. For example, Brookhurst is, connects, is a north-south corridor connecting Fullerton, Anaheim, Garden Grove, Fountain Valley, Huntington Beach. So from time to time, there are calls for projects that OCTA puts out. As part of Measure M, we participate and team up with other agencies to put out a grant application for funds. The importance of this is that in order to maintain connectivity to all our signals and to remain one of the most connected cities in the county, we need to continue to fund these, this equipment. And Measure M is a mechanism that allows us to fund our, our infrastructure and our signal timing. OCTA pays eighty percent of the cost and the cities match twenty percent. So this is equipment that would, that has a lifetime expectancy, and if we don't plan accordingly, we would end up paying a hundred percent of the cost. Instead, we, we partner with partner agencies and we're able to fund and maintain all of our equipment in place at twenty, at twenty percent of the cost. So it's, it's a really good thing for the city. We're very competitive. Each corridor gets re-timed every couple of years as traffic patterns change. And that's, that's a little bit of background on signal timing. Signal timing continues, allows for the orderly movement of traffic through congested corridors in the, in the county. There's a lot of information that comes out of these studies, but the most important and impactful bit of information that comes out of it is number of stops, right? So how many times, how many greens do you get before you have to stop? And as an example, when we first started timing our corridors many years ago, we were able to reduce some of these from five, five stops through the city to one stop through the city. So, and we do that through signal timing and implementation. Now, what this MOU does is it extends it so that we can participate in a pilot program with OCTA, and that's what's referenced in the staff report is, is for us to participate in a pilot program. And what this pilot program does is essentially we're, we're going to receive equipment and software from a vendor that is going to partner with OCTA and the cities along Brookhurst. And we're going to have access to real-time data. That real-time data is going to allow us to program our traffic signals more efficiently. Typically, traffic signals are timed, and there is a monitoring that takes place in the form of a, of a human being driving a vehicle and monitoring conditions. What this pilot program will do is it's going to implement software that we hope to expand throughout the county, but we are fortunate enough to, to be the first, one of the first cities on the first corridor in this, in the county that is going to have this performance monitoring. And what that does is, in addition to the observations that are, that are seen by the, by the, by the folks who monitor the corridor as part of the regular maintenance of the signal timing, we'll now have more accurate, real-time information that will allow us to program our signals to even be more effective. So on, on that note, I'll leave you with this. Signal timing is very important. It's, there's a safety aspect to it. It's directly tied to emissions reductions as well. The less stops, the, the better for the environment. And in addition to that, it takes into account a lot of the safety elements involving pedestrian activity, for example, near shopping centers, near schools. So it is a very, very powerful part of what we do in the city in keeping traffic moving and, and trying to maintain vibrant business districts and, and, and safe corridors throughout the city. So with this MOU, you would be, you would be allowing us to enter into this real-time performance measuring program with OCTA, and it is, there is no cost to the city as it is a pilot program that's being funded wholly by OCTA.
Thanks for your presentation, uh, and offer. I see, I see that the fiscal impact, that OCTA will be responsible for all project costs, and there's no financial impact to the city. All right, Adolfo?
That is correct.
And so, and so with that, I move to approve. I trust in, in your study already on these projects, so with that, I move to approve the projects.
Reason I had him, Paul, is I had a question on it.
Go ahead, go ahead. You, you, you still entitled to ask the questions.
Adolfo, thanks for the report. So the information that you gather from this pilot program, is it, would you be able to implement it on other parts of the city?
So the software that's going to be, that's implemented on Brookhurst will essentially take data that's, that's occurring on Brookhurst. So it's going to take specific information about left, throes, rights at each traffic signal along Brookhurst, along the entire county. And then it processes it and it provides, it provides us a better snapshot of when we could make adjustments to the timing on Brookhurst specifically to enhance Brookhurst. The software is, when it expands to other corridors, we'll be able to gather the same type of data but specific for other corridors and then implement it into those other corridors. So this data is specific for Brookhurst to fine-tune Brookhurst and make it operate even better.
And after this, you would be able to go after other grant, possibly capture other grant money to continue it in other corridors?
What the corridor cities on Brookhurst are hoping, we're, we're hoping to, to like it and we're hoping to see some benefits from it, and if we do, then we're going to push OCTA to make it an eligible expense on every project corridor so that we have additional capabilities when we move on to other corridors. And yes, every other corridor, we would, we, we would seek grant funding for each corridor. Just as an example, this corridor, we obtained, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project and a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of it was OCTA-funded. On another project corridor, perhaps we need more equipment, depending on our financial situation. We work with, with our interim public works director, we work with Aaron Bax, our finance director, and we determine if there's a need on another corridor, then, then we'll go after grant money for that corridor as well. And we're hoping that this software expands throughout the county so that we can be more responsive and, and have our signals operate even better on all the corridors in the city.
Great, awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
I'll second Vice Mayor's motion.
All right, we have a, we have a motion and a second for this item. Roll call vote, please.
Yes, motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Manso, a roll call vote, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manso?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries five to zero, and just for the record, it's to approve the memorandum of understanding number C-0-2440 with the Orange County Transportation Authority and authorized the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you so much. And next item of the consent calendar is 3.6, CityNet Harmless Services Dashboard Report, May 2021. So may I ask interim police chief or any officer from our police department?
We actually have Matt, Matt Bates from CityNet here.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, all right. Please.
Thank you for having me, Mayor and City Council. As you have, before you have the homeless services dashboard report from May 2021, so I'm happy to make a brief report and answer any questions you may have about that report or other things. But in my report, I thought I touched on two related items that are not in the, the dashboard report, just to kind of fill out the picture a little bit about homelessness in Westminster and opportunities that are on the immediate horizon. And the first is the Yale Shelter. So as you all know, the Yale Shelter in Santa Ana is the county-run shelter that is the regional shelter to serve the central service planning area. Unfortunately, the, the, as of today, the Yale Shelter is full. Well, it's full today. I don't know if today was the day that it got full. Last month, we were able to enter two clients from Westminster into the Yale Shelter. It is full, but with the caveat or the footnote that it's full according to the COVID-19 standards. So like most shelters across the county with COVID-19, there were, to maintain social distancing and safe stay-at-home, to follow safe stay-at-home protocol, the number of beds at all shelters was reduced. And as, and the, in the county is still operating that shelter under the COVID-19 guidelines. So at some point, we don't know when, it's up to the county and, and to, to make that determination, but at some point, hopefully soon, those restrictions will be lifted and additional beds will be opened up at the Yale Shelter. Related to that, the county is reporting that they've offered vaccinations at all the shelters, not only the county-run shelters at, at the Yale Shelter and at Bridges Kramer Place in Anaheim, but also offered that service to the city-run shelters. So there's opportunities for homeless neighbors, just like the general public, to avail themselves of the, the vaccinations. So we're hoping, we're hopeful that at some point soon, additional capacity will open up at the Yale Shelter. And then the other thing that I just wanted to, to share is kind of a once-in-a-generation, if not a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for Orange County. And it's connected to the, the 2021 American Rescue Plan Act. As part of that act, HUD released an unprecedented number of emergency housing vouchers across the country. Orange County, on May 10th, 2021, the county was notified of their, of its allocation, and a total of one thousand and thirty-three emergency housing vouchers have been awarded countywide. So those are through the four, through the four housing authorities in the, in the county. There's the Orange County Housing Authority, Anaheim Housing Authority, Garden Grove, and Santa Ana have, have housing authorities for their cities. And so each entity was awarded a certain number of vouchers. Obviously, the Orange County Housing Authority had the greatest allocation. They received five hundred and fifty-seven vouchers. So none have been awarded yet. But when you look at the monthly dashboard report, one of the things that's on the dashboard report is the number of clients that CityNet has in case management. And I think that number is forty. And so what that means is that those, you know, part of our representation for clients is not only to exit them from the streets into the available resources within the continuum of care, but for clients, even that we enter into shelter, for some of them, we, we get them document-ready and we get them into the coordinated entry system for the county to try and get them ready for permanent supportive housing. But like I said, on a normal year, there may be a few permanent supportive housing units that come available, a few vouchers that they can get connected to. And in this influx of over a thousand, you know, is the most in my twenty-five years of doing homeless services that I've seen. And we, you know, who knows when we'll see this opportunity again. So our, our work, you know, will continue, not only for the clients that we're representing that, that we've exited from the streets, but from those that are still on the streets and are not availing themselves of the shelter system, either because, you know, as, like I said, as today, they can't get into Yale, or for any number of other reasons that, that the shelter system is not a good, a good fit for them. We continue to work with those clients, get them document-ready, get them assessed and verified for their disabilities and their qualifications for permanent supportive housing. The same process will take place for the, for the allocation of these vouchers that will go through the county's coordinated entry system. And so agencies like CityNet will be representing clients to try and get them connected to those vouchers. So that, you know, obviously, everybody, every, every person who gets connected to a voucher, if they get connected from a shelter, then that opens up a shelter bed and creates a system flow, another person that can, can leave the streets. So this is good news all around. Probably can't underscore how important and how encouraging it is because, you know, the, the, as proud as CityNet is of our work doing street outreach and engagement on the very front end of the continuum of care, we recognize that the solutions to homelessness relies, lies in housing. And so this is a real, this is a real opportunity to connect people to permanent housing that will end their episode of homelessness, really permanently in most cases. So we're very encouraged, very excited for that, and our teams in Westminster will continue to work to represent those clients, get them ready, and get them connected to those vouchers and those start the flow. So that concludes my, my report, and I'm happy to take any questions that councilmen have.
Thank you so much for your report. So do we have any questions or concerns from members of the city council?
Hey, Matt, hey, thank you for your report. I just had a question about your availability during daytime hours. So we had, I had a residence send an email about, I guess during the daytime hours, maybe you weren't a, CityNet wasn't available for some help that was needed. Are you guys not available during the day, during the week?
So we set a, a regular schedule in partnership with the police department and with city staff, and we publish that and distribute that every, every month and change it according to staff direction. But just based on the size of the, the, the size and scope of the contract that we're engaged in with the city, you know, we're limited into the number of hours that we can afford to send staff. So there's, currently, we're at, we're in Westminster two, two days a week with a team of two. And they're there for half a day each, each of those days. So it depends on the time and on the day. Obviously, there are other hours available, and so, but typically, those are, you know, best, it's, it's most efficient if we can do those, if we can schedule those ahead of time with law enforcement and with city staff rather than being on, on call, just because, you know, if there's, if there's an encampment or a big event or something like that where we can get as much done as possible if we're going to, if we're going to deviate from that schedule. So we're open to it. But it's a partnership with the city in terms of trying to craft a schedule that's going to create, going to do, accomplish the most good for the resources that we have available.
All right, so I understand that you physically, so you're saying you're available two days a week, but so if there's a call, say, say one of our homeless liaison officers needs to try to find a bed, and, and that's not one of the days that it's on the schedule, so you're not able to help to locate a bed if you're not scheduled for that day? Is that the case?
Not as a general rule. Certainly on, on, you know, on individual cases, we, you know, individual cases, we, you know, we, we, our, our teams have a, a close relationship with the homeless liaison officers. And so, you know, we, we are, and our, our, our mission as an organization is to, is to provide service. So I'm not going to say that that, that never happens. But it's not something that, you know, that, that we, we're not on call in the sense that anytime you call, we can make ourselves available. Because, as you know, the volume of homelessness in Westminster is, you know, is much more than can be met with the scale and scope of the, of this, of the current contract.
Well, I guess I didn't really, I thought, I guess I was under the assumption that if there was a homeless individual that needed help, there was just a matter of between the homeless liaison officer and CityNet, you know, between the two, they would be, you know, trying to find a bed, emergency bed for that individual. I don't know, I don't know that you were only available on certain days and we were kind of, so we were kind of on our own, basically, if you're not available that day.
Well, no, I mean, you're, you're, so your homeless liaison officers, they're, they are equipped to refer into the Yale Shelter. But, you know, as I, as I reported earlier, the, the Yale Shelter is currently not accepting referrals. So from there, it's a matter of, you know, sometimes there's, we have the ability to demonstrate community ties to other cities. And so if they have, if the homeless neighbor has community ties, verified community ties to a city that has a shelter, we can make the connection that way. And, and, you know, normally what we do, if there's a situation like that, is we try to schedule the appointment to when, you know, we're going to be available during a regular outreach. And again, I won't say that we'll never do the, you know, those emergencies, but we just try not to make that, we try to make that the exception and not the, not the rule.
And do, do we have, do we have anybody from homeless liaison officer? Commander McCormick, are you sitting in for Officer Perez?
Yes, sir, I am. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and the City Council. Like Matt was saying, our homeless liaison officers, if they contact somebody out in the field and CityNet is not available, our homeless liaison officers have the ability to call the shelter directly themselves. And they do everything they can to get that person into the shelter if, if they want to go and if the shelter is going to accept them. Like what Matt was saying, right now Yale is closed. And it could be anytime during the day, the shelter may only be accepting so many people on that specific day. And if they've already accepted that number of people, then they're not going to accept our client. We then try to make an appointment with them so that we can contact them the next day or a day that CityNet is available to meet with them. And then they use their resources, try to, to try and tie them to another city and get them into a shelter in that city. And Matt, correct me if I, if I'm wrong in any of that. Oftentimes, our homeless liaison officers will reach out to CityNet on the days that they're not riding with us. They're not non-contract days and reach out to them to get a phone number or try and get a resource to get those individuals off the street.
Yeah, and I think they, I think that's all accurate. The other thing I would add that, that occurred to me as you're speaking is that, you know, if it's a situation with, with minor children or with vulnerable women, in those cases, obviously, we prioritize those. So because there is, you know, for minor children, for women, there's, there tends to be more emergency beds available. So there's just within the, within the continuum of care, there's more, there's more beds available. And obviously, you know, we don't want to see the most vulnerable people left alone on the streets. So in those cases, obviously, I think, I think it's safe to say both law enforcement and, and CityNet as an agency, we really will prioritize that. And, and I can't think of a time in Westminster where, you know, we've had minor children that have had to spend a night on the street, at least ones that we knew about. Because, because it was either the homeless liaison officers and our city network together to get them connected. We can usually get that, get them connected pretty much immediately.
And, and when we run across those situations where we have children or children with a single mother out on the street, we have other resources we can use if the shelter is not available.
Yeah, so it's gonna be my next question is if it's a female, you know, that's in distress, is there other, other facilities that would take a, a female besides, you know, emergency homeless shelter, you know, there's a home for battered women or some other, other, other homes that can help out there available for them?
Everybody know that I think that we call our homeless liaison officer also on this call, so. I'd like to let everybody know, okay?
All right. I, I just, I just want to make sure that, that, that that we're doing everything possible. If somebody truly out there and is seeking help, that we're just not turning them away, you know, say, well, you know, sorry, there's nothing we can do for you. If there, if somebody's asking for help, that make sure that we do everything possible to help them. You know, and just, just go out there and if there's no bed available at the homeless shelter, we find other, other resources or, or, you know, help them out any which way we can, you know.
Absolutely. We, we have a slew of resources we go through. And at the end of the day, if we're not able to get them into a, a bed today, we will try again tomorrow and the next day until we can, if, if they are willing to go and if, if they want services.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, anything else from council member? So may I have a motion? If not, I'd like to move to receive and file. Go and second that. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Tom, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen to receive and file. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramonzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Tom.
Yes.
And motion carries five to zero.
All right. Next, we have regular basis. Regular basis, item five point one, process of pulling consent calendar item for a separate discussion by member of the public. I guess that is the item from our city, our seat club, yes, please.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. So this item was requested last meeting to consider the practice of pulling the consent calendar items and provide direction regarding the process, particularly allowing members of the public to pull items for separate discussion. So as the car, the agenda currently states that all matters listed under the consent calendar are conceived, considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent counter for separate action or discussion. So in the past, members of the public have called out consent counter items and requested that they be pulled. And so in some instances, requests were made via oral communications and council members would honor those requests. And other times, they would just call it out directly and those items would just get pulled. So we just want to be consistent with our process. And so I did ask a couple of cities to provide their process for members of public pulling consent counter items. So as stated in the, you know, the staff report, and for those who haven't read the staff report, the city of Brea does not allow members of the public to pull consent counter items. Costa Mesa allows it. Members of public can complete a card or raise their hand via Zoom to pull an item. In addition to Brea, that does not allow it. Garden Grove, Huntington Beach, Los Alamo, Newport Beach, Santa Ana and Stanton do not allow members of the public to pull the consent counter items. Laguna Beach allows members of the public to raise their hand virtually or in person. And York Belinda allows members of public to make requests at the beginning of the meeting. In the instances where the city doesn't allow members of the public to pull items, again, council members do have that ability to pull items based on what they hear through public comments and oral communications. So at this time, we are just asking council to discuss the process and provide direction as to what you would like to do as far as members of the public pulling consent calendar items. And of course, how, how that would happen and where that would happen on the agenda if that were the case. So any changes that you would be directing us to make, we're gonna, we can do those administratively.
Yeah, one of the things our city clerk for your report, frankly appreciate that you list all the city surrounding us and based on your report that majority, like, majority of a city, they wouldn't allow member from the public for any concern item. Only a few. I believe that it really helped, it really helped the meeting to be more efficient. I mean, and I think member of the city council, he or she more than welcome to pull any item from the consent. So that, what I read from a report, like majority of cities surrounding us, they wouldn't allow member of the public for any item, yes. Any other comment from member of the city council, please?
May, may, may I say something?
Please.
You know, cer- certainly, we, we want the community engagement. We want the public, if they have any particular questions, so want to understand more about any item on the consent counter. We certainly would like to make the public and accommodate them. You know, just say, I, I can speak for myself, if I can see any item on the consent calendar that I think that the public should know. And when the staff report be presented during the council meeting, it will be, become more educational to the public. I certainly, I'm gonna pull that item. And, and, and most of the time, you know, the, the, it's appear that all the item that we pull from the consent of that calendar as a council, it's, it's relevant. We have question, we have comment. Well, we want to understand more about, about that particular item. So I, I, I think we certainly, we need a policy so that the, the city clerk, random city clerk can have a piece of mind, have some direction to follow. Because right now, apparently, we don't have any set policy and as such, last couple of meeting, the city clerk allow a member of the public to pull an, an item through Zoom. I don't think, I don't remember we do that during the regular meetings, is that correct?
We've, we've done it before. Like I know, I think Terry Rains was one of them who shouted out an item. And back then, it was when Dick Jones was still city attorney and we just allowed it. And, and again, that, that may have just been a practice that was done because it didn't happen as often, but it was just done, you know, over time. May have been done before I was even here. So, you know, again, it just kind of contradicts what we have in the agenda. So at this point, it's just, you know, a point of clarification. You know, just because, just because a member of the public doesn't pull a consent counter item, it doesn't exclude them from being able to talk about it. So they can still ask their questions during our public comment section, you know, beforehand, if that helps.
Yeah, I, I certainly, I would suggest that we adopt a policy that any member of the public want to understand or want to hear more, any item on the consent calendar, make that, mention it, build a public comment so that we can, as a council, we can understand the, all the criteria, all the important item on the agenda. And we make the decision whether or not we're gonna accommodate the public by suggest that we're gonna pull that, that item from, from a calendar. If we, I think if we allow the public to independently do that, it's gonna be, if we have a full calendar and we have some controversial items, kind of create a huge problem. In addition, I mean, we already have a staff report that published online on city website and the email and the public, I mean, the staff reports is there. So that's my suggestion, so.
So do we have any other? Yes, member input, please.
Like, I have a comment. Yeah, just like a city clerk Christine said, we just want to be consistent. We did have a couple of meetings where there was some confusion about that. And that was the reason why I wanted us to speak about that. I'm always gonna honor a, a resident or anybody from the public or they want an item pulled, I would always honor it, you know, because we want public engagement. I think that's really important. We're here to do the public's work. And, and we need to promote public engagement. And if we're gonna not, you know, if it's about like councilmember doses or the mayor, we can, you know, with the, you know, with the, sometimes we have really long meetings and we can be here all night, but you know, we could have a situation where we can have somebody pull all the items, but I'm always gonna honor it. This just put, leave it. If we're gonna just have council, just council or staff pull items, let's just make sure that we honor that and stick to that. And, and, and have a policy and, and, you know, just make sure we don't do that going forward and where there's no confusion. And just leave it as that. So I'm, I'm okay. I guess I'm okay just leaving it as is, but I'm always gonna honor, I'm always gonna honor a resident asking to pull an item.
I think that, I think that majority of, of the city council, we always honor the input from member of the of the public. If you compare our city to other, other city, they usually allow like member of the public to speak for three minutes, but our city, we allow for five minutes. And I, that if the, if the council member, he or she believe that, you know, the item need to be pulled, you know, in a true on behalf of any member of the public, I believe that majority of council, we totally honor that. And I seen that, you know, every, every single meeting. So I, I don't see a problem. And I hope that the city council, you know, we, we understand that we have a lot of item in agenda. So, you know, I make a motion that, to leave that as is. And I believe that any moment, if man, of any member on this city council, we, we want to pull any item on behalf of any member on the public, I think that we more than believe so. But my motion will be leave as is.
I'll second.
And I'm sitting quite, you okay with that? Is that a good direction or?
That's, that's absolutely clear.
All right, we have the motion, the second on the floor and roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramonzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Tom.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. Next, item five point two, review of council policy for placement of items on agenda.
Yes, thank you. So at the June ninth meeting, the last meeting, there was a request to consider the policy for placing items on the agenda and so asking for direction regarding the current policy. Just to recap what the current policy for the city council members placing items on the agenda. This was approved back in June of two thousand and nineteen. And the current process requires a formal majority vote of the council members to place any item on the agenda. The policy specifically states that any member of the council, except the mayor wishing to place an item on the agenda, must verbally announce his or her request during council member comments. Requests for placing items on the agenda are no longer to be made to staff directly. At the meeting, requests must state the, the topic and a very brief reason why this is being requested for placement on the agenda. No discussion will be made among the council regarding the request to ensure the Brown Act is not violated at the dais. And that's just generally stating what the item is and the purpose for it. A motion will be made to request placement of the item to which the council will vote on whether to approve or deny the request. If the council majority approves the request, staff will work with the requesting council member to determine the next available date. The item can reasonably be on the agenda. If the item is not approved for placement on the agenda, then there is no majority interest at the time and it doesn't get placed on the agenda. The requesting council member cannot request the item again for a minimum of six months unless there's an urgency determined by new legislation, litigation or policy. And the mayor can also place an item on the agenda through the city manager or public forum. And the mayor can also place an item on the agenda through the city manager or public forum without the majority vote of the council. So, at this time, councilmember Doe, who requested this item, is requesting that the city council eliminate the requirement for a majority vote to place items on the upcoming agenda and allow council members to place items on the agenda through the city manager. So staff this time is requesting uh, direction regarding this policy.
Thank you so much for your report and this uh, time for uh, council member input, yes. Any input?
Please, since I, since I asked for this uh, item to be placed on the agenda, uh, action item to um, discuss. I'm um, well, this is probably the most conspicuous uh, controversial uh uh, change that uh, does the council make uh, how long ago was that, uh, two years? It was facing with a lot of opposition. It's undem- undemocratic and we all suffered, e- every single one of um, member of the city council su- suffered as a result of it. At one point, the entire city council had to go through a facing, was facing the recall. And I think it's time for us to move forward. It's time for us to rescind this decision. And we need to go back to the regional way of doing um, placing item on the agenda. I agree, if the agenda was uh, got shut down by the majority of city council, we should have a cooling period before the item can be placed on the agenda again. I think it's reasonable. But every single uh, council, the mayor, the vice mayor, will voted in by the people, we representing the people of the city. We have the right to voice their concern, to have the right to individually place item on the agenda. So I'm asking the city council, um, you know, after you're making your comment, uh, allowing me to make a uh, um, motion to um, eliminate this, to rescind this decision and went back to the way that uh, we used to be. Um, plus the, there should be a cooling period if your item uh, uh, they get the majority um, interest. Should be a cooling period, six month, three months, six month, or whatever the time that the council feel comfortable before it can be placed on the agenda. If I had, um, I give the floor to uh, other councilman.
All right, do we have any, any, any comment from other council member?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Yes, um, when, you know, when people say um, it's undemocratic, this is, this is what it is, is that council members, you know, we, we all represent, you know, the public, you know, I, the way I see it, is like, I represent, we represent everyone. You know, people who voted for you and I feel strongly. Now, I, we, we represent people who also, who didn't vote for you, for us. That after we were, you know, you can't just represent, feel you represent the people who voted for us. So when you say it's undemocratic, is sometimes um, I know there's residents who'd come to you and say, hey, um, I wanna, I wanna talk to you about this issue, I wanna talk to you about that issue. And, you know, and we have a lot of smart people in our city, you know, I mean, we've all walked. Mayor, all of us have all walked our city, you know, and we talked to a lot of people, there's a lot of smart people in our city. And uh, you know, they come to us with issues and, and um, a lot of good points, a lot of good things to talk about. And, you know, hey, what do, what do you think about placing this item on the agenda? Or that item on the agenda? And, and when we have, when, when we're um, restricted by uh, by the process of placing item the agenda, in essence, we're, we're shutting down, we're shutting down the, the, the people. So that, that, that's when I think when people say it's undemocratic is that. In essence, we're shutting down the, uh, that we represent by, by uh, by the process of placement, the uh, by the placing items on the agenda, by making it taken, making the process long or sometimes sometimes if, if the other council, other council members don't support your item or at least to talk about it, at least have a conversation about it. And if you can't get two other votes and then basically you're shutting down your con- the, like, your constituents. And, and I think that's, maybe just to have a conversation about it. So I, I, I think that that's, we shouldn't have that, we should at least be able to have a conversation about it. So I, I think that we should, I'm in support of mi- putting it back to the old way. Uh, um, so, you know, I, I, I agree with councilmember Doe, we should, if, if the council doesn't support it, had us have a conversation, if the council doesn't support it, okay, let's have a, a, a grace period where you, you know, you can come back six months from now, or I don't, I don't know what it is right now, it's six months? I think it's six months.
Six months.
Yeah, six months, yeah, we can do that. But, but at least just have, have a conversation about it. It shouldn't take, you know, a month to get it on there for it to come back. You know, if, if, you know, if your council doesn't even support it, to even have a conversation about it, that's basically you're shutting down the community, you're shutting down the, your residents to even have a conversation about it. So, we, we do need to have it, could go back to the old way, so.
Yes, I appreciate a comment from a councilmember Doe and councilmember Menzo. However, that I like to uh, speak, you know, based on what I have observed for uh, more than a year, almost two years, that uh, I believe, I believe myself and the rest of the council member, including every single member of the council, we always respect any request from member on the city council for placing any item on, on a future agenda. I haven't, I haven't seen any like uh, deny of any request from any, any member of, of the city council. I'm speaking about myself and I believe that uh, you have to agree with me. I agree, I really appreciate your concerns. However, you know, in the re- in the reality, I myself and, and, and then the rest of the members of the council, we all respect each other item request. That's what I've been uh, observed and exercised for almost two years, yeah. But I want to hear from other, other council member, yes, please. And uh, I believe that for a lot of city, uh, placing an item on agenda require two member on the city councils, so if you want that, we could able to do like two member of a city council and we don't, we may not need like majority, but at least two member of a city council. So if we, if we try to do that, I think that, that going to save our city manager or any staff a lot of time. That's what I recommend, because only two member on the city council, you know, agree to place any item on agenda. And that be, I, if you, if you try to do a survey in many other city, I seen that. I think major, majority of other city, they've been, they've been doing that.
So are you, you're done, yeah, I asked you. Is, are you saying that two council members um, would have to do the same thing as wait until the meeting, the day of the meeting?
No, what I really mean, what I really mean that if any, any two council member want to place any item on agenda, so two council members could able to talk to the city manager. So we don't need to vote, the council, the, the majority of a council, we don't have to vote, yes. But if we try to do that, at least, you know, two member of a city council, we believe, you know, two member believe that the issue really important and that need to be discussed publicly, I think that helpful. I, I think that if we try to do that, hey, I don't mind. Because the issue really important, that, you know, uh, rather than every, every member of the city council, we try to bring everything up. And, you know, our staff, they going to be overwhelmed. Yes, but that's in my opinion.
So I'm gonna read my opinion and see if it overlaps with your opinion, or maybe it'll add uh, to your opinion, clarify, uh, it just sounds like it may be similar. So my opinion is that, I think it's already stated earlier was that, uh, I think we, we already have that policies. We, we can't bring up the same subject matter for six months, right? Um, so that, that I, I think that's already on there, so I'm gonna keep that. And so, agendized by two council members, sending emails to city clerk um, or during the meeting by majority vote like we were doing. Um, to put it on, let's say, if the item appears to be the same and the city clerk said, no, this looks like it's the same, then the council could vote and by majority could approve or disapprove to put it on. Okay, because, you know, I don't want it to be the city clerk having to decide to put on this agenda if she thinks that this is a, you know, an agenda that's similar to the one that was already put on within six months, does that make sense?
I'm okay with that.
There are, so there are really three ways. Uh, we have the two council members, all it takes to email city clerk. And that, so, so we don't have to wait for a meeting. And, or uh, if, let's say we have um, if the city clerk says that this, uh, since it can't be the same subject matter that we've already uh, turned down. Uh, and uh, so we can't, we, it can't come back for six months. So, if we were to if we, if, if, when in doubt, we can always vote on it and go with the majority. And um, so if the item appears to be the same as what's been raised, the council could vote on it, meaning that you can still put it on and you could try to put it back on, but with a majority vote. Um, you can agendize it. Other than that, you only need two um, council members sending emails to the city clerk. I think it's just um, I think what, what happened in two thousand nineteen was there was just the same agenda being put on and then on again and on again. So um, this is to prevent the same agenda being put on, uh, so I think this is a compromise. I don't know if I'm making myself clear.
I'm okay with that, if, if that you want to make a separate motion, I would second. Well, uh, can I have my?
Motion on the floor.
Please, please, is that, is that a motion on the floor or no?
No. I'm, I'm, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for everybody to make a comment, so I'm listening to everybody.
There's, there's no, there's no motion right now.
There ain't no motion, that's fine, that's fine, okay.
Vice mayor.
Yes, um, I agreed to um, Mayor Ta, um, you know, to have to council agreed to that, to the item to put it on agenda for the next meeting. I, I'm open to that. However, I want to, you know, state of what I see for the last two years. And it has been noted that uh, almost every item that brought up by the city council was approved without any reservations. I remember there was only one item in the period of two years that was not approved by the majority council. Uh, simply because uh, council recognized that, you know, having that, the process, the current process that irrelevant or unnecessary items being agend- agendized will waste time, waste the time and the resource uh, of the city and the majority will surely be rejected. Having council to place an item through the city manager, I'm talking about one council, placing the item through the city council will put the city manager in a difficult situation to say no. When he knowingly, knowing that item to be agendized will either waste time, resources, or bring chaos to the city. I think it's, it's, is, we put him in a situation that he can say no to this, to the council. Third, having a majority validate good items to be in our next agenda meeting would apply to all council members, not to any particular one. All council member have to go through the same. And would, would make our city meeting more efficient and productive, I think. And I'm, I'm, I'm very positive about that. But, you know, I'm open to see if uh, if the mayor and other council wants to have two council member agree to the items, I think it also works. At least we have to agree to the item instead of any one of first, one of first, you know, uh, any one council can come in and then ask the city, the city manager to put this item under uh, the, the agenda period.
Okay, if I may.
That's all for my comments.
If I may uh, add to my comments and rebuttal of um, Chief Charlie's comment, um, Vice Mayor's comment. Um, I would like to say that it, it, um, my comment to your rebuttal to your comment and you mentioned that it is a efficient way. And I, I really don't think it is efficient. I understand that it hasn't been very effi- efficient doing it the way we've been doing. Because we have to wait until um, you know, the meeting to agendize. And once we agendize and we have to wait the next meeting to have our meeting. And so, in the interest of moving our city forward, um, there are so many agenda that, I mean, I wanna place and I realize that, you know, um, you know, I think, I think we, we all agree that, you know, we're gonna be if we, if we can all agree that we're not going to put on agendas that we've already, we know that people already, you know, we already talked about and I think that I still want to keep that, can't bring up the same subject matter for six months. We keep that, that's for sure. And so, it's not the same what we're saying now, doing the two, the emails by two council members, but not to Marwan, not to the city manager, but to the city clerk. I think our city clerk, the burden is on her to say, okay, this agenda has already been brought up. And this has, you know, you can't bring it up again in six months, right, Christine? So, if, if I believe she could do that, then I think the two, you know, two council member approval by sending the email should work, not to Marwan, but to the city clerk. And like I said, we don't have to wait until we have the meeting to bring up. And we don't have to vote, you know, we don't have to wait for the majority to vote. So I think this time around, if everybody could, you know, let's just take a, let's say, if we take a itty bitty step, you know, one step, okay? So let's just take one step um, backwards, so shall I say, trying to go back to the way it was. You know, I think that, that is kind of a, you know, that's kind of a, if we could um, compromise, that would be a compromise to me. I think that's a compromise to me. So can you do that, Christine, if you can do that and say no? And when in doubt, and if you say no, and the other person argues, then it will have to wait for the meeting and then we have to vote on it.
So, ultimately.
Earlier.
Absolutely, so I, I don't mind um, requests being sent to me directly, you know, there are a couple of other cities that allow that, so like, city of So like, City of Stanton, council members will submit a request to the clerk, City of Costa Mesa will, you know, they'll have, um, requests sent to the city clerk. Um, you know, however, just, you know, keep in mind that, that ultimate, you know, authority does belong to the city manager as far as, uh, agenda items go. But, um, you know, just to, I, I appreciate everyone's concerns regarding, you know, regarding adding items. But, uh, I do have a couple of, um, just a couple of things that, you know, if we're gonna go in this direction, um, that I definitely need to highlight. So just kind of giving a history of what was done before, um, you know, before this policy was put into place in two thousand nineteen. Uh, we did have council members, uh, you know, council members did have the ability to go directly to our assistant city manager, our city manager at the time to add agenda items. Uh, there were times where it was just an individual council member, but a lot of the times it was, it was two council members that did it. My concern about doing that and not doing it in this public forum setting is the giving staff the ability and the time to generate a staff report. So if you'll notice, looking over the past five years where the staff reports, some of the council member's staff reports have been very brief, um, you know, a few, a few years back. And that's because we were getting requests like at noon on a Thursday that the agenda went out at five in the afternoon. Um, so, uh, you know, given, given, you know, that timeframe, we internally as staff do have a deadline for staff reports. They need to be entered into our system and completed for review by myself, our, you know, city attorney, our city manager, our finance director. And those agenda items actually go in two Thursdays, uh, before the council meeting. And that's just to give time for everyone to generate that report, so.
That's the only thing, is that's the only, uh, thing you, you're, you're, um, you're, you're the only concern, then that's, that's really easy. You know, I understand you guys have asked me for more time before, so now we're just making a policy. So, you know, anything, we gotta have a cutoff and see, you know, I give you the privilege of give, let, you know, gi- giving us a recommendation and when you think the cutoff is. Um, because I know you guys work on a cutoff, uh, date and time. And so that's reasonable. Request that I believe are reasonable because we do want, um, you know, uh, agenda that, that are really well vetted and not just a short, I do remember those times. So I think that's one good thing that came out of this, uh, since two thousand nineteen, we have, um, you know, uh, I know you guys have more time to, to write and to, uh, do your research. To be ready up, so I'm sure staff appreciates that.
Yes, so staff, yes.
May I make a, may I make a brief, uh, comment? You know, I listen to all the members of the council, I totally, I can totally understand, um, where you're coming from. So getting, getting, uh, uh, one more council member to support you is reasonable. It's not, it's not, uh, you know, I think it's reasonable, but the problem with that approach is, uh, you're gonna violate the Brown Act, you're gonna shop for someone to support your, uh, agenda item when you represent your constituent. And then you have one, you have, you reach out to one council member who say, you know, when, oh, it's a two condoms of bill soon, you know, I, I'm not gonna touch up with a ten foot pole. Then you had to reach out to another council member, now you're in violation of the, um, Brown Acts. So I, I totally understand that, but this, that is my concern. Why don't we just go back to the way we used to be? And since with the council dynamics is kind of adverse right now, if you don't like it, if somebody step out and bow and you don't like the way they operating and make a, uh, agenda and item and, and talk about it and change it to, um, have someone who, um, agree with you and, and, and team up and put an item on the agenda. And then we've been through enough. I don't know about you, but I've, I've seen everybody going through a lot of crazy stuff over the past couple of years just because of this. So I would suggest that go back to the way it was. We all know what to do. We, we all know what is good and what's not good. So, and then if you don't like the way it's, uh, it's going, then just, uh, place on the agenda and we talk again. And, uh, I, I absolutely under, uh, sympathetic, understand what, uh, um, Madam City Clerk was just, uh, saying, we do need to have to give staff adequate timeframe. And I, I, I would suggest like at least ten day before the, uh, the, uh, ten day or, or, or seven, between seven and ten, to give uh, staff time to generate quality report for the meeting. I'm, I'm listening to your suggestions.
All right, I think that I, I, I heard all the common input from member on the City Council, but I still believe that two member of the City Council agree with one item is going to, uh, save our staff a lot of time and also that help, uh, also help to move the meeting, uh, forward. Efficient. I don't mind, you know, I don't mind to have two member on the City Council to place one item. And I don't believe, you know, there is a Brown Act violation because we all understand the rule. If you want to place any item on agenda and you want to talk to other council member. And if that council member did not agree, so then you may need to bring that up in a public meeting. So there, so I, I think, I'm, I'm not really sure whether or not I understand a council member whole, so council member whole give us two option. The first option, the two member of the City Council want to place one item. And the second option, that one council member would, uh, more than welcome to request that item publicly and majority of the City Council, we, we have to agree on that, you know? That would be two option, and I think that I agree with, uh, that, uh, yes.
City Attorney, um,
Can you comment on that?
Yeah, can you weigh on, um, Councilmember Doe's comment as far as the Brown Act?
Um, I think, I, yeah, I think what, what the marriage has said would be completely acceptable. If, if you're talking to someone and the person agrees and you send an email to the city council, there's no, there's no violation there. That's one other person on the council and they're sending an email to the city clerk, uh, indicating two people are in support. Um, if that person says no, uh, what the marriage has said was that you then bring it up at the next meeting. Not go to, not go to a third person. I, I agree that potentially could be a problem if you start shopping around for a second person. But what, what was suggested there was that if that first person says no, you bring it up at the next meeting and then the council votes on it, that would be acceptable.
So then, so basically, we still need the majority of the city councils to support on something that could be controversial.
Only, only if the person refuses to agree with you or to put the item on.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, Councilmember, uh, Ho's suggestion on the other item is, I understood it is if there's some confusion with the, uh, the six month rule as far as the item being the same, then, then that will come to the council for a decision to decide if the item is the same. To, to, you know, to clarify the item is the same as far as the six months rule. That's when the council majority, that's when we, that's when it would come back to the council to decide if the item is the same, correct, Councilmember Ho?
Yes, yes, right.
So, so, but, I mean, the, the two, I, I like the suggestion um, at the two, the two council member, I mean, that is a con- uh, compromise, so.
I do find, I do find that they, a lot of cities use that.
They do.
Two council members, yeah. Every city's a bit different. Um, there's a lot of variety out there, but I would say a lot of them seem to use a two-person rule. That way, there's some kind of commonality as to an issue, you know?
Okay, with that, with that being said, I would like to make the motion that we, um, we send, uh, the way that we, um, been the, the practice we've been, uh, doing to place item on agenda. Uh, we, we send that and go back to the way, uh, it was, we used to be. What, what, any member can, council can require contact city clerk, not the city manager to request placing an item on the agenda. Um, if the agenda failed to support a majority council, then, uh, on a meeting, a public meeting, uh, there will be a six months, uh, cooling period before the item can brought back and put back on the agenda. Uh, uh, before six months, it has to be, um, presented in the city council uh, and got the majority, uh, three votes for it to be agenda and discusses publicly.
It's just, I would like to make a substitute motion that.
Before you do that, is there, is there a second to that motion?
So your, your motion is just a single, 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 um, council member?
Yes, that's what I heard.
And just to clarify on that motion though, um, because this was important, but that doesn't exclude any items that need to come back. Um, um, if there's an urgency determined by like new legislation, litigation or policy.
Yes, thank you. And, and also given the city clerk ten at least, uh, seven to ten working days, days of working days, um, before the council.
May I have a substitute motion? So I would like to make, uh,
It has to be a second, second, uh, to that motion before you.
Is there a second to that, to the motion made by Councilmember Doe?
I'll second it.
Okay.
You repeat all that.
I, okay, my motion is we send the way that been, uh, we've been practicing to, uh, place item on the agenda and go back to the way it, uh, it used to be that any member of the city council, including the mayor and the vice mayor, can place, can contact city clerk. Give her, uh, at least seven to ten day prior to the meeting, have city council meeting to place, uh, to, uh, to itemize a, a, an item on the agenda. Uh, any item that fail to support the majority city council in a public meeting will be, uh, cannot be put back on the, uh, uh, agenda for at least six months. Unless it's, uh, it's had to be new regulation and all that stuff that, uh, stated on the staff report. Uh, the item can revive and brought back to the city council, um, public meeting if it presented, uh, in, in a, in a, uh, public council meeting with the majority, uh, of the city council, three votes approved to bring it back.
Okay, so back in two thousand nineteen, did we have that six month policy?
Nope.
Want to hear from Christine?
So, so back when we, when we developed this policy?
Yeah.
So, yes, so that was.
Under the old policy, right? I think you're saying. I don't believe we had that.
I'm sorry, so, so before the policy that was adopted by council in June twelve for majority, you were wondering about if we had a policy for six months?
Yeah, the, the, you know, that you can't bring up the same subject matter once it's, uh, for six months. No, we didn't.
No, so when, so when requests were made directly to the city manager, um, and assistant city manager prior to this June twelfth majority policy, there was no cooling period. There was actually no policy. It was just practice to go tell them.
Okay. All right. Okay, I got it. I understand. What, uh, okay, so I think if we all, we, we, you know, keep our city in mind, let's all focus on moving our city forward. And I think that by giving the vote today to go back and then adding on the six months, um, then you can't bring, you know, cooling period, you know, don't bring it back, can't bring it back for another six months. Let's try that, so I would go for that. I'd be the third vote. And if not, we'll bring it right back.
All right, so we have the motion and the second on the floor.
All right, that was a motion made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by.
I, I, I'd like to make a substitute motion to that.
Okay.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to have two council members agree on the item that want, uh, that the council want to put on the agenda. And, uh, within the period that, uh, the city clerk wants to have the, the time favor yourself. You know, in order for staff to work, adequate time for the staff to work. And also along with the six months, uh, you know, that people are talking about.
All right, I, uh, second, uh, I substitute motion.
So we have a substitute motion on the floor, so we'll vote on that, uh.
Um, Christine, can I get clarity from you? Cause how much time? It was stated in the first motion, seven to ten days. How much time do you need? I think it'd be better for clear on that number.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would still put a guideline of seven to ten days, um, as well, because like I said, uh, let's see, let's take a look here. I'm just actually, I'm just looking at my calendar to count out days at the moment. Um, seven to ten days prior to the meeting might actually not be. I say seven to ten days is putting us like literally the week before the meeting, which wouldn't, it wouldn't help our situation.
Be the same thing as before, almost.
It would, it actually would put us before, because seven days before is the Thursday that the agenda goes out, so.
How about ten day? How about ten day?
Tell us, tell us comfortable to, for you and your team.
Also, and, and so here's the thing, like, staff is really flexible about, like, what, you know, uh, as far as working with, you know, we've been flexible with the council members as far as working on the items. There are some items that are easier to put out, you know, as far as, um, getting a staff report done, but there are others that are completely complex that lead, you know, legal review, et cetera, ones that are, um, extensive, especially coming out of community development or, or even public work sometimes.
For more time.
Well, so I would, so, I mean, if we wanna be.
Two weeks, two weeks prior to the meeting.
Yeah, I would say if we wanna be consistent with what our internal staff calendar is, reports really need to be done by the Thursday before, the two Thursdays before the meeting. Because then you get that following week, that week right before the council meeting for a review period. Because staff reports that we write for council, we do, you know, ask you guys to review it so that we're capturing the essence of what you're looking to do. So I think that's, you know, I think that's fair, um, i- if we, if we set the exact same deadline. So if you let me know, or, you know, let me know, um, you know, uh, uh, I guess the, the sooner the better, but we need to be able to generate a staff report, um, by two Thursdays prior to the meeting. So it, it's just not, you know, it, it would just give staff.
How many days that?
I think that's thirteen days.
Is that like, uh, uh, a Thursday, I, after the council meeting?
Yeah, so like, so like, for example, like this month isn't gonna count because we have five Wednesdays. But like, let's say the meeting of the fourteenth, July fourteenth, staff reports are due in my system, completed. So all the research, everything is done, they need to be in by July first. Which means that staff had been working on, you know, the research, generating the report, et cetera, prior to July first, so it's even longer.
So, so could you, would you be so kind of state that the, the verbiage of how long you need? How much time you need so that we can incorporate into the motion?
Hey Christine, if you say thirteen days, that will give you the day after the council meeting.
But see, if I tell them thirteen days to give me the topic, that means I'm only realistically getting less, I'm getting less than a week to generate the report. Because if, 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 you know, if council gives me a topic, I still need time to write it, or, or staff needs time to write it.
So three weeks?
So what I'm, if I could suggest something.
Sure.
You know, we had this discussion about council controlling an item once they brought it up.
Yeah.
Because sometimes staff doesn't have time to get all the research done. And in some situations, the council member still wants the item to go on anyway. So I think you're gonna have this situation where if someone brings a topic, say thirteen days ahead of time, and staff, it is just not enough time to do all the research. It might be a very involved subject. So that i- item may not actually get on for two weeks or three weeks, or, or, you know, three meetings, whatever it might be. But the council member really wants to put it on for some discussion reason. But the council member really wants to put it on for some discussion reason. Then the council member should be able to put it on with a very short staff report. Or they could agree, okay, go ahead and take two meetings and get, get the research on all the homeless shelters in the area. And figure out how many beds are available, you know, something that's more complex. So what I'm saying is, I would suggest, you know, maybe like thirteen days, but with the understanding that the council member. If, if staff cannot get the research done, cannot get the staff report done. They'll tell the council member, and if the council member then could, still wants it to go up, still go on, then we just do a short staff report.
Yeah, I agree with that, because twenty one days is too long. I mean, you know what I'm saying? It's something you're like, you really want to, because when you want to agenda something, you want to hear about it, like soon. Twenty one days, that's too long. So, okay, thirteen days, and if you need more time, then you work with the, with the council member.
With the council, yeah, okay.
And so.
We're back to the same what we're on now, so.
So we're back, so we're, I mean, like I said, there due the Thursday before and, you know, so again, some reports are easy to. Some reports are easier to generate, like my reports were easier to generate um this time around, but some have been a lot more extensive. But that being said, you know, given that this, um, you know, this is, I mean, this is generally done with city manager through. City council, but I guess for um, you know, two sides of it. For staff to be able to generate a quality report for the council members, we want, like, I would just want the reassurance from council. That um, that you'll let us, you know, do that if that's the case, like if it's a, if it's I, if it's an item that's going to require. More work and we absolutely cannot get it to the next agenda, um, you know, just to bear that in mind. It, it, you know, we'll try, you know, we'll try our best, but uh, you know, at the same time, it's always a concern about. Late, you know, last minute items being put on.
So I want this. Why to everybody? If we agreed, then it would be for everybody, all five, not just.
Oh, absolutely. I, I, I totally agree with that. I think it's fair for the city clerk and the staff to, to meet times.
So we'll say the, the two Thursdays prior to the meeting then. Well, we'll have it concurrent with the same timeframe that we have internally. Will that, will that work for, for you all? Okay.
Now we have to, we have a new comment that we had, you gotta amend the. Amend the, the, the motion.
This council member Nguyen was making a motion.
Yeah.
Do, do I need to repeat my motion?
Um, I have that, I have your motion stating that it's for two council members to agree. Um, and then a six month cooling period if it fails. Um, I would just suggest that council follow the same calendar that the staff uses for the deadline, which is. Two Thursdays prior to the meeting.
Can I also add to that, uh, can I also add it to that, that uh? If, you know, this is just address the concern that the customer member Doe has earlier, that, you know, if he talked to. One of the council member and he said, no, I, 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 I don't want it, I, I don't think that is appropriate, or I, I don't, I don't think it's need. To go into like, you know, agenda it, then that uh council member can also bring it up. At the um, uh, council meeting in order to have, have a majority vote on that.
Yeah, I think, let, let me just say that under the brown neck, that would be always allowed, because by majority vote. So yes, I would agree that, at a, in addition to bringing it up outside of the meeting with an email. Of two council members, that's one way. Another way would be for someone to bring it up at a meeting. In any situation and say, I would like to add this, that would require a majority vote. At, at the end of the meeting, kind of like what we've been doing. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so we can keep the agenda as is right now, um, and not change the agenda, so it can still say comments and requests for agenda items from city council agency members. So we'll leave that as is.
Okay.
And, and one other thing would be that, do you want to keep the language that? Council member Ho added about the council member who adds the item, controls the item. I would think you, you want to keep that.
I think we already approved that.
Yeah, we, that's right.
But we're amending everything, so I just want to make sure we're, we're keeping that. Okay, very good.
So, uh.
That would just require the maker of the substitute motion and the seconder to uh agree to.
I already second.
Okay.
Vice mayor motion, yes.
Okay. So, one more time, just to recap, two council members to agree to add an item via email. Um, and that's still going to be to the city clerk or the city manager? Perfect. And it's going to be, there's going to be, um, so that request needs to be made two Thursdays prior to the council meeting. In conjunction with the staff calendar, there is a six month cooling period if the item fails. Um, in addition. Uh, a council member can ask for an item to be added um at a meeting uh for, with a majority vote. And then whoever uh makes that request can, will control when that item is put on the agenda.
We, before we, before we proceed to vote, uh, I just want to repeat what uh, um. City clerk uh mentioned earlier that the ultimate responsibility is still a city manager. So I would like to make sure that, you know, um, city clerk alert on, uh, inform. The city managers, um, you know, when the item put and ready to go out.
Yes, of course, the city manager, he, he need to know the item in advance, of course.
Absolutely, and that's, and that's just, that's just a given based on his authority city manager, so. Um, all right, so uh, we can do a roll call vote on the substitute motion. Council member Doe?
Uh, no.
Council member Ho?
No.
Council member Manso?
No.
Vice mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And mayor Ta?
Yes.
Okay, that motion failed three to two. So that puts us back at the original motion and. I know we kind of went back and forth on this, but we're, uh, to the maker of the motion, the seconder, we're going with the thirteen, the two Thursdays prior to the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that was made by council member Doe, seconded by council member Monzo. And it's to rescind the current policy. And then any member of the, any members to contact the city clerk, um, any single council member. Uh, if the item fails on a public meeting, there's a six month cooling period. Uh, the deadline for member of the council to contact the city clerk is two Thursdays. Prior to the meeting to place an item, also in conjunction with the staff calendar. Um, and then did you also want to, uh, were you adding the keeping control as well? Whoever requested it controls when it goes on?
Yes, and I think six month cooling period too.
That was, that was on there.
Okay.
And then, um, is the second or? Person second the motion, um. But keeping control, uh, whoever.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so vote on the original motion. Council member Doe?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Okay, I just want to say that I want to give this another chance, and if. If it becomes problematic, we're going to have to go back. And then we got to go back to the drawing board, figure out, and maybe we'll go back to the way it was uh two thousand nineteen. Um, so I'm going to give it, yeah, yes.
Council member Monto?
Yes.
Vice mayor Nguyen?
No.
And mayor Ta?
No.
Okay, the motion carried three to two.
All right, uh, next item, five point three, council member interaction with city staff.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Uh, this request came from uh councilwoman Kimberly Ho requesting this item to clarify the process. Of the interaction between council members and city staff related to inquiries about projects that are under submission. Uh, looking into this item and to ensure timely and efficient results. Uh, the council members are encouraged to go through the department head for that. And then if more information is needed after uh the council member talk to the department head. They are of course always welcome to come to the city manager for actions at, at any time. So we leave it up to council member to discuss this and give us direction how they would like things to happen. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that I, I agree with us, with staff recommendation that uh. Any member of the council uh will go uh. To city manager or department head for any question or concerns. I don't have a problem with that. So if majority of city council, we uh agree with that direction. I like to, I like to move, ask, recommend it. I don't have a problem.
Okay.
May I, uh, may I ask uh the uh? Council uh woman Ho to uh make comment the reason why you put this item on the agenda?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, I was going to say.
You're muted yourself.
You, you.
Got it, thank you. Okay, so. Basically, I feel that, I mean, I've been, I've, I've been informed that certain council members interfere with staff's work. By bringing developers and insisting on sitting down with staff regarding projects that are under submission. And I think that's a no-no. You know, this is how we got ourselves in trouble uh with so many lawsuits back, even. It's, you know, way before I came on board. Um, and I find this to be very disturbing. As it interferes with the process and it puts undue pressure and stress on staff when a council member is present. So I, I know that we could. Uh, agendaize and we could approve, we could, you know, all this in place, but I think we need to make sure. The burden is also on staff. So when we have a new HR person, we want to make sure. We make sure that she addresses issue and that we make sure that. Um, staff goes through the chain of command or whatever it is that they have to do to file a grievance. Because we want to make sure we nip it in the bud and not wait until lawsuit comes along. So, like I said, our city has had many lawsuits in the past due to similar problems. And I would like to put a policy in place to clearly draw the line. Council members could email the department heads and. Um, and the city manager when inquiring about a project, but should not go directly to staff. And that includes myself. You know, I, I know that, um. I don't think I've ever been so rude as to come and insist on staff, sit down with me without an appointment. We know we need to have an appointment. Because our staff's very busy. That's just, you know, keeping busy is part of their job and they're busy and especially. I, I, I won't say any particular department, all departments are busy. So we need to be cognizant of that, we make sure we, you know, if we want something, we got to go to. Department head, email and CC or email both. And, um. So I would like to see if we could put something in, in place for staff, because I, I think, you know. Before, let's say before a lawsuit, we, I would expect that we make it clear to staff. And that they have an understanding, and I think HR will put this in place so that they should report any violation of this policy. To their direct report in writing, whether it be, it should be the director or the CM. So I really think that this is unfair to staff and this is just causing undue stress and that's just not, not acceptable. Okay? So that is why I brought this agenda on. Um. So I don't know if we had a second. The mayor, yes.
I did second about, I did second about it. I don't know where, whether anybody's second about it.
You have a other, I agree with Ca- customer Ho as far as developing a policy, but. The, the policy, this, the staff report is just, is department heads or, or, or city manager, but I think it needs to be further. Go, like you said, it needs to go further than that. We need to direct staff. So your, your motion, the com- the mayor's motion. Doesn't go further, we need to make sure that uh direct the city manager to develop a policy, direct HR to develop a policy. This spells everything out precisely what you're talking about. That, that, that we don't have, that we don't ever have a council member. You know, anybody on council, mayor, everybody, they ever comes in with a, a, an applicant. Or a developer and comes into city hall and sits down with a department head or a city manager and says, hey. Here, you know, here, we need you to work with them on this application and this and that. It needs to be a policy, everything spelled out. We can never, and, and it needs to be spelled out that we should never, council member should never, you know. Go uh some underneath that, you know, to a staff member, we shouldn't create an environment where staff member feels intimidated. Or pressured by, by anybody on council. But it needs to be, you know, it needs to be a policy written down, so I think the motion needs to be to create policy. Not just uh what it, this staff report says, correct?
So I believe that as a council member, you uh, you are allowed to uh. Raise any concerns or have any question with city manager or department head. In any subject, in any item, because you know, how can you run the city? When you have the question, when member of the public asking you and you're not allowed to uh ask. Uh, city manager, that, you know, that, that doesn't make any sense. So as a council member. You are encouraged, I mean, you are encouraged to discuss the topic, the item. With the city manager and department head.
Here's, uh, here's another thing I wanted to also amend, and I don't know if I'm, I know I'm not making the motion, but I think we need to add. The fact that the council member should not be in the meeting. That is just too stressful for staff. So I think I'm, I'm very respectful of, of our planning staff, and this actually happens a lot to planning. More than any other department, so I think, you know, with, you know, you could raise the issue, you could email and say, okay, why does it take too long? So long, and this is long overdue and all that, but you should not be sitting down pressuring staff by sitting in the meeting with staff. To tell you the truth, I, I mean, I'm setting, I'd have to abide by this also, because I've. Sat down with staff, I, I don't believe, and, you know, I don't believe I've pressured staff in any way, but this also applies to me. So I believe that, you know, just keep in mind, I'm trying to, you know, keep our um. Lawsuits down. We want to make sure we nip it in the bud. I don't know exactly, but I know I've been hearing a lot. From staff and I think, you know, maybe from the directors, and I'm not sure if I, who I heard from, but. If we, and then not only do we have to do that, we have to work with our HR person, but we won't get into that today since we did not agendaize to talk about that. So I'm saying that no council member should be present at the, at the meetings with staff. We have to rely on our staff to do their part, and if we need to, we could email them hundred times. But email the director, email the CM, do not sit in the meeting with staff, do not hound staff. That's not acceptable. That's, I want to make that clear, so this is the five point three, I want to add that.
May, may, may I make a comment?
Can I, can we, uh? Since we're here on this topic for council. Uh, I mean, I, I, I think I've seen this before in my time in the commission. Can we, can we expand this um to commissioners as well, since we're here in topic? That they're under the same rule, if, if the commissioners have a question. Uh, they need to just go to the uh department head or, or city manager as well. I mean, is that some?
Can we talk about this question or is it, can we talk about commissioner?
Yeah, I think so. I think it pertains. It's, it's about staff or council interaction with staff and that. And it kind of similar issue with. Yeah.
May I say something? You know, it's it's city council direct city staff to do their to to work on their personal projects of friends, family and sausage has been going on in the city for a long, long time, you know, many, you know, I talked about it in the past. And constantly asking the city manager to implement a policy. The city manager doesn't have to get the direction from the city council to implement a written policy to protect city staff. He should basically, you know, have someone write down a policy and direct staff to notify the department head and then the department notify him or her, the city manager, of any interaction with the the member of the city council. Period. The policy, but you know, we have to understand the policy is just as good as the supervisor who supported or the boss who supported. We can have a written policy, but then this this the staff, the employee, city employee do not use safe to step forward and report the contact to the department head or a city manager. And it's 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 useless. I want to focus on this. The city manager is the ultimate is a person who have to number one care about city employees and do whatever he or she can to protect the city staff from being ordered around, being intimidated by elected official in the city. And that is what we, you know, for 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 councilwoman Ho to bring this item to the agenda and I mean, I, you know, I cannot believe that we, the elected official, have to implement a policy to protect our city employees. That is the job of our city manager. We have, we went through so many city manager in the past. Thank you.
So I would like to, I know this is a very important issue, and I know that we don't want to rush into making a decision. I would like to propose that we form an ad hoc committee of two, perhaps myself and councilmember Carlos Monzo to create a policy and come back and bring it back to the council for approval. So, you know, we want to think it through a little bit and then bring it back. If we could, if we may.
Yeah, I second it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So motion?
Yes.
Second.
All right.
Okay, so that would be like the that would be the motion and we have a second.
So is that the substitute motion? Because I think you originally had a motion to just have.
Okay, that would be a separate to motion, I think you were.
So right, so right now we're voting on the substitute motion made by councilmember Ho, seconded by councilmember Do to have an ad hoc committee comprised of councilmember Ho and Monzo to study this further.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, okay. So roll call, vote.
Just to just to be clear, what I heard was to to study it further and to come back with a proposed policy. I think that's right.
Right, so councilmember Do.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, next item, five point four, one, two, Monument Event at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park on Sunday, June sixth, twenty twenty-one. Before I ask all the members of the council to have input alike to at the city club to let attorney Van Tran to be here because he is a chairperson of the Monument Foundation.
Why does?
Why, why do we, why do we need the Van Tran chair?
Yes, because, you know, we are discussing about the event and he happened to be the chairperson of the foundation. Yes.
I don't know if that's pretty ethical.
You know, I have, you know, I have courtesy to invite him in. City, city attorney, am I right?
Well, the the mayor runs the meeting. You see, you're saying that you want to have him speak because he's the chair of the group that's was in charge of the event at issue? So is it to speak and to answer questions, I guess, or?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying or?
So he make so he make himself available to all the western concerns that may be the city council may have. Yes. That's all.
I don't think that's that's allowed, right? This is our council, you know, the members of the council. He already make his public comment. He can speak. What was that again? I'm sorry.
We could choose not to ask him anything.
Yeah, of course.
And he cannot interrupt our meeting.
Of course.
Is that correct?
Of course.
He can listen, he can listen.
We have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, we have a question, we can, we can allow, we can bring him in.
I guess it's, I guess it's under under discretion of the the mayor.
Can you let him in, uh, city club?
Well, I can, so I can un, I can unmute him.
All right.
I I don't know.
I feel very uncomfortable about that because I felt I felt his speech earlier was I mean, the tone of the speech, I felt I I feel uneasy to let him back in, but if he wants to say something, then say it before we begin. If you want to ask him something, ask him and then let it be done and then let us begin without interruption because I don't want to have this back and forth.
Already had his five minutes if we.
Well, I don't know.
We we don't want to break.
Our city attorney to tell me what the the law says, but I really don't think he should be back to be having a conversation with us. If he wants, if the mayor who's conducting you know, the meeting and if if the mayor wants to, if it, you know, it's his prerogative. I guess if he has, he's in the right to bring back the city, I mean, the attorney, attorney Van Tran. Then I think we should back, bring him back and ask your questions at the beginning. He could address us at the beginning, but then after that, I don't want to be back and forth with him.
I agree. The mayor has a, the mayor or anybody in the council, if he has, we have a question for him, yeah, ask him, that's fine, but.
But you know what, he cannot be part of this meeting. He's a member of the public. He can listen to the to our meeting. We can talk, he can listen, you know, and I I do not believe that he have the right to interject during our meeting. This is the city council meeting. He can listen just.
Let me clarify, let me just clarify. The mayor, in terms of operating the meeting, would have the right to to bring bring him in, let's say. A majority vote of the council could override that, controls what happens if you disagree with what the mayor is doing.
Well, let me ask.
I would say before we exercise our our majority votes, I don't know who's going to be voting for it, but I want to ask the mayor, you know, out of respect to the mayor, is there something you want to ask Mr. Van Tran to speak about? And then you could do that. But I don't want, like I said, I want a conversation with him, so.
Propose this. How about we, let's listen to this staff report first.
Yeah, that's what I was.
To see what we have in there and then we'll talk about.
Just listen to the reporter. We have a question and we'll ask him.
Okay, so I agree that we we got to hear the staff report and then I I'm going to I'm I'm going to bring him in so he could, you know, answer some of the western concerns that some of us may have. All right, staff report.
Good evening, mayor and council members. It is a brief report. I, this is about the event that took place at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park on, say, June on Sunday, June sixth. I noted the the content that I had and it's included in that staff report. If you have any questions of me, please feel free to ask. I I had very little details which was provided in that staff report. Do you have any specific questions for me?
Could you read your staff reports, please?
I can absolutely. At the meeting held on June ninth two thousand twenty-one, councilmember Tae Do asked for an item to be placed on the agenda regarding a groundbreaking event for Quang Tree Monument held on Sunday, June sixth, twenty twenty-one at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park. Sid Goldstein Freedom Park has become a popular location for community organizations to host meaningful cultural events throughout the year. Prior to the pandemic, KU Services and Recreation Department was providing the mayor and council members with a monthly list of approved events at the park. However, in light of the pandemic, the department was not approving any park use requests since March twenty twenty. But we administratively approved two events which took place at the mall. And city council approved a special event permit to host a movie night at Old Sachequa Park, which was postponed to October seventeen, twenty twenty. In mid-April, twenty twenty-one, Mayor Ta contacted staff to see if there were any scheduled events at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park on Sunday, June sixth, twenty twenty-one. Staff informed him that the city was not formally permitting any events at the time due to the restrictions associated with the pandemic. But people were using the park informally. Staff informed him that a member of the Vietnamese community of Southern California had contacted a staff indicating that they had been meeting there informally with a small group of people at the park to conduct their monthly flag raising ceremony. On Friday, June fourth, staff received a phone call from Vice Mayor Charlie Chi Charlie Nguyen requesting that the restrooms and kiosks be open and that the electricity be turned on at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park on Sunday, June sixth, twenty twenty-one. The interim Public Works Director Jake No was contacted and informed him of his request. And the group agreed to pay the fees. An invoice was sent to Vice Vice Mayor Charlie Nguyen on Monday, June fourteenth, in the amount of a hundred fifty dollars, and those fees have been paid. That is the length of the staff report.
All right, so this is a time to bring attorney Van Tran in, please.
So you want him to make a make a public comment?
No, you know, if you don't ask, yes, so he not good to answer, but if there is any question, you know, about the foundation, about anything that event, so he may answer, but if, you know, you don't have any question, so he wouldn't have to answer. That's fair.
Okay, so you're not going to make any public comment right now? Okay, good. So i- i- if I may, I'm gonna have a make a remark and then I will give the floor to the rest of the council to make some comment. So, you know, basically, um, on June nine. Can you hear me? Uh, on June nine, I I receive a lot of photographs of an event that happened at the Freedom Park where Mayor Chita invited Mayor Chi Charlie Nguyen were present. I did not know what it was. I tried to. People told me that they 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 found those photos at on social media and I went on my Facebook page and I couldn't find it. Apparently, the the person who posted photo, you know, didn't allow me to see it. So someone else have to send it to me. And there are quite a few people at the park. Um, so I I I asked to see if the our city staff issue any permit for that particular event and we're told that there's no permit. The event was not permitted because we still in the pandemic. And, you know, prior to that, I have received a lot of email, phone call complaining about event has taken place during the pandemic at the Freedom Park. And there was people complaining, saying the city council only, you know, allow our own group of people, friends, associate to conduct activity at the park. And I had to check with city staff who confirmed that absolutely there was no permit issue during the pandemic at the park. So I looked further a little into it and apparently that was a groundbreaking for ceremony for that, for the Quang Tree Monument which the city council support last December. Let's let's bring back to to that particular item, agenda item in last year that were presented to the city council. And I was under the impression that that the project was supported and presented by a group of Republic Vietnam veteran. And who are the organizer of this for this particular project. And that's why I supported it. But then lately, I was, I've learned that the project was organized by Mayor Chita and Vice Mayor Chi Charlie Nguyen, who are the the two of the many people on the board organizer board directors. So I feel that there's a conflict of interest in there. You cannot be an organizer for a particular project, bring it to city council and make your cash in your own votes. That's a huge issue with conflict interests. And that event on June nine, myself, councilmember Carlos Manzo and councilwoman Kim Lee Ho was was not invited. We didn't know anything about. And I I have received a lot of complaint about the project. There's a lot of issue we raised in the past few weeks. And that was reason why I asked to play this item on the agendas for discussion in the city council.
All right, so may I have a few question for Attorney Van Tran? Can you let him in, please?
I don't think there was any question. I just had a couple of comments.
Okay, please, okay.
Thank you, Mary. Again, this was before my time. I wasn't on council when this came about. So I was just learning this in the last couple of weeks about the the controversy about this. And the last couple of weeks, I've been getting a lot of phone calls from Vietnam veterans explaining to me the situation and how the history, how the how this monument, how they didn't really have a say or they didn't, they weren't included in the conversation about this monument. And I, you know, and I, and honestly, you know, I I find that, you know, very disturbing. You know, you know, I kind of find that kind of, not kind of, kind of really disrespectful. So isn't, and their concern wasn't the monument itself. It it was the process. It was the process that that it went about. And then learning the history of the Freedom Park. The placement of of the monument, they all the veterans that contacted me, they, none of, none of them were against the monument itself. They're they're they were really against the location and the process. And and like I said, I'm just learning about this and and we can, and then the other thing, the other issue is that here we go again with the with the perception. is that here we go again with the with the perception of something wrong with the council member Doe just mentioned about a Vice Mayor and the mayor being on the Board of Directors and and then being voting on this on this item to to approve it. Then, you know, there we are again, another, another another issue where the perception, bad perception about something unethical, you know. And that's here we are, like what we talked about before, you know, putting ourselves in a situation like that. And that's what people's concerns are. And every time whenever you put yourself out there, you create a situation like that. It's just natural that people are going to speak up against it. People are going to get upset. And and you just can't, you can't, you can't get upset that people are getting upset. And I think we need to, you need to understand where people are coming from and and listen to what the community is saying. So I'm I'm just learning about this issue. This was before my time. I didn't vote on this item. I'm just getting these phone calls from everybody and trying to understand what their, what their, and 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 to be honest, a couple of the the veterans that called me, it was really difficult to 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 have a conversation with them because a couple of them got really emotional with me. And and it was really hard for me to to listen to them and I started getting emotional. I couldn't help but get emotional myself because, I mean, these are people who served our country and gave sacrificed a lot for not only our country, but for the South Vietnamese people. And they really got emotional on me and 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 I couldn't help but get emotional myself. And it got hard. It's really, it was really, really hard for me to listen to them. And and, you know, it's just, it's an ugly, it's kind of a bad, bad deal, bad, bad situation and it's, you know, it's, this is something I'm just learning myself and it's just not good. It's not a good, not a it's not something that we should be having in our in our community. And I I don't know, you know, we need to, we need to do something to make this right.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak?
Please.
First, I would like to address Councilmember Manzo. You, I I heard twice that you 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 said that you didn't vote on this item. I believe, I believe the item is voted on December ninth, which I think in two thousand twenty, I think that you already on board. And I believe that you voted for that. And if you don't think, you know, I mean, you know, you you are entitled to say that, but the record saw a shelf. So I I'd like to ask for the city clerk.
You think I would know Sergio Contreras was in that meeting and I took over towards the end of the meeting?
Okay, all right.
When I were re sworn in at the end of the meeting.
Okay. And, you know, according to, you know, from what Mr. Councilmember Doe said, we have our own group, you know, he he said that our own group, which is, you know, from the city, I I assume. I don't know that you know that the staff already mentioned that there was an event before us, before that event, before the the groundbreaking event on the same day. Actually, it's just an hour before that at the same place. I don't know that you know about it. So it's not, it's not for our own group. That is false statement. Secondly, you said that this event organized by the mayor and the vice mayor. And that's false again. I don't know where you heard that from, but this is from the foundation. I will ask the attorney about it. Okay, thirdly, you said that this is conflict of interest. And I can tell you that at the time that I vote for this one, I don't even know, you know, I don't even know it ahead of time. When it brought up, and I know that this is an event, this is a good event, so I vote along with all of the council members. And I was a member of the organization until late of April, that when they invited me to join the organization, the foundation. And, you know, they they asked me publicly, you know, on air. And and they asked me if if I if I could lend a hand, a hand on this projects. And to me, you know, this is a a a good project. It's a project that we we should, everyone of us should honor. Then that's why I joined and I accept the invitation. That was late in April time frame. And if you follow, you know, the 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 media, it's all over the place, you know, that 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 I join, that when I join the the organizations. So another thing is conflict of interest. What is conflict of interest? Only if you engage in a project that have contract with the city or have official, a financial interest in it, that is conflict of interest. There is no financial interest in this organization here, in my joining to this organization. So I can tell you that there is no conflict of interest of any kind. So, you know, now I want I I want to go ahead and 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 ask. I don't know that Christine, have you invited the, I mean, Attorney Van Tran in yet? Did you hear what he said, that what I just said?
Yeah, so Van Tran, Van Tran is in the meeting. He's an attendee right now. He's also has a speaking ability to unmute himself if the council would like to address questions to him.
So what from what, from what I just said, I would like to ask the attorney Van Tran to confirm whether what what I just said is true or not.
Before Van Tran, Mr. Van Tran speaks, Vice Mayor, the issue is not, we're, you're always, this is what I'm speaking about right here. You're always going to have the situation where you're going to try to get the technicality about what you're speaking about, conflict of interest. You can sit there and get in a debate about the legality and all the technical data. But what I'm speaking about is the perception and 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 I'm sure that everybody on the city council has taken the ethics training before. And in the ethics training, it talks about perception, okay? And in the public's eye, they don't care about the technicality about conflict of interest. What they see is what they see. And what they see is two members of the city council on this board. And then they see two two city council members voting on this item. They don't, they don't know about the technicality that you're speaking of. It's all about the perception that the public sees, okay? They don't, they're not going to get into the the little, little details about the the technical issues about conflict of interest, if it's legal or not legal. It's about perception. And that's what I was speaking to earlier. We set the example as city, as city leaders that do we, does the, does the public trust us? Do the public trust us to do the public's work? Do they? If we conduct ourselves in this manner, do they trust us? We have to look at it. I, every day in my life, I look in the mirror and say, am I a good person? Can my children respect me? As a father, I did an interview the other day. And they asked me about being a father. And the hardest part that they asked me is, I'm not a father, and I I believe this really strongly is fatherhood.
I don't know why you go off.
Not automatic. You have to earn it. And as city leaders, the same, we have to earn it. We have to earn it. And this is, and we have to earn the respect and and the respect and and the trust. We have to earn the respect and the trust of our residents. Do, are we earning it? Are we doing it? And and issues like this, I don't think so. And and just to answer you, I might ask, Chris, is it any chance that our city clerk has the that information or that December ninth meeting? Just to answer your question about, if I was, if I believe.
I don't, I don't think that that we need to, okay? If that's the case, then I may be wrong, you know, remember wrong, because I know that December ninth, you're on board already. So I, my assumption is that, but if if on December ninth, council member Contreras do there, then then be it. I don't have to, I don't have to challenge with you on that. Now, let me say that from the perception standpoint, every one of us have perception, different perception. I don't argue with you. I don't argue with publics that they have that perception. But the thing that we do, if we think it's the right thing to do, then we should do it regardless of the perception. We have to let it, we have to let them know that what is, what they are thinking. And we have to be able to clarify for them that this is the thing that we, i- i- it meant for us, you know, it meant for one of, every one of us to do. I am proud as a volunteer in the community, as an activist in the community for over thirty years. I am proud that I can land a hand with the foundation for this historic monument honoring the sacrifices and heroism of the Army Republic of Vietnam and US military person in the victory of the Battle of Quang Chi. This is the same as all the projects in the community that I think is a good project, is a thing that the good cause. I land my hand on it. I don't, I'm not afraid of people saying that, oh, he is everywhere, he's joining every, he do everything. Nobody is going to tell me that I, why you are doing, why, why you using your free time to do, but I mean, community works? I don't think people ask me that. But in fact, they appreciate that I put more time, I took the time of my family and do it. So I am not afraid to let the public know what I feel as long as I, and 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 join with the community to do a good cause project. As long as I don't conflict, engage in conflict of interest of my roles as a council member.
Can I speak, you know, yeah, so I think that Vice Mayor already explained, and I believe that there are no conflict of interest. Myself, Vice Mayor of the Foundation or a city, and I want a city attorney to confirm that there is no conflict of interest whatsoever. I also have the, I also have a question for Attorney Van Tran. Mr. Tran, can you explain a little bit about that event? And who got invited and who didn't get invited? Please, Attorney Van Tran.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before you answer a question, sir, before you answer a question, we are, we already read your statement that you sent to us. So we understand all that stuff. You don't have to repeat yourself.
Oh, no, no, hold on. Well, thank you for letting me know before I even speak, Councilman Tae Do. I'm not going to repeat myself. You got the foundation's letter through my signature as chairman of the of the foundation at the direction of both the Board of Directors, which comprised of twelve members throughout the country, plus the Board of Advisors and sponsors as well. So you can check about the foundation and I would like to invite, because I'm I'm hearing that there is, and it's quite unfortunate, frankly, because this is such a good project and all of us ought to be working together, including all the council members, that council members Doe and Manzo do not have a lot of information on this. And I would like, on behalf of the board, extend an invitation. And as you know, I did in the letter that I sent to to you, as well as council members Ho and and Manzo to to come to the press conference for a full briefing. But we we would love to have an opportunity to sit with the council to give you a full briefing over coffee or lunch or whatever that works. Because council, council member Manzo made a good point. I mean, he came on the board and he did not have a lot of information on this project. And he spoke with a lot of veterans, but he hasn't spoke with our foundation, which receives hundreds of other veterans who supported this project throughout, not only in the US, but throughout the world. And that was why we were able to raise funds so quickly and receive the support level that we did. There are a lot of issues and questions that I would love to have an opportunity on behalf of the foundation, along with other members. If if you don't feel safe with me, sounds like you don't want even let me in to talk. I'll be happy to invite other members of the board, local at least, because we have also Northern California board members.
Well, sir, you know what? We come down and we talk to you. We not, we not, our safety not at risk by having you involved in this meeting. You know, we have nothing to worry about you, but you you irrelevant in this meeting. We're talking about.
No, I understand.
Wait a second, sir, just a second. Yeah, you're, you're not relevant in this meeting, with all respect. We're talking about you, you and your organization that operate an event without permit in the city of Westminster during the pandemic. And that is out of concern right now.
Question, is that a question or you want me to respond to that or you're going to make an allegation?
That would be a question. So I think that you more than welcome to respond.
Okay, well, let's hear your question on that.
Say what? Are you asking me a question or?
Or are you operating an event, a groundbreaking event in our city in the park without permit?
First of all, yes, I'm glad you asked that. First of all, the staff was contacted and no no permit was required, okay? If we're going to be required with a permit, we will get one. But obviously, one was not required and therefore we did not.
What is the condition?
Secondly, let me finish, if I may, since you asked, let me finish the my answer and then you can say whatever you want. Secondly, the event, the official event was very brief, and I already explained this in my letter to you. It was within seventy-five minutes. It's more spiritual and it was kept within a hundred people. And only those folks who are involved with the foundation or with the groundbreaking were there. None of the elected officials were invited, other than the two members of the council who happens to be board members. And they were board members after the foundation was created. So I just wanted to.
So you're saying it's just like less than a hundred? So you're saying less than a hundred?
During the official program, during the official program. Obviously, that was the goal, okay? It's an open, it's an open facility, obviously. The site was open. And people come and go. And the, and the event was no more than seventy-five minutes. That was our goal. So you cannot blame the foundation for not getting the permit. That's unfair and that's wrong.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me, let me bring this up. You know, I listened to somebody.
So you talk about the foundation.
Just a second, sir, just a second, just a second. Some people, member of the community forwarded me a recording, a YouTube video of a Vietnamese YouTuber up in San Jose area, Nghe Lu, something like that. And in he, I I think I think it was an interview of somebody. I think you, it's, I heard your voice in that program too. But he indicated more than two hundred people show up. It's it's not, it's contradict to what you were just saying. Less than a hundred people. Just a second, just a second, just a second, sir.
Okay. I'm glad, I'm glad.
No, no, that's.
Mister Doe.
Just a second, sir.
I'm glad you played that tape. You know what?
Hello.
I'm glad you played that tape, first of all.
Second, we're not going to debate, sir. Well.
I'm glad you played that tape because it's part of me. Okay, during the program itself, you're less than two hundred.
Hey, you know what? This is turning into an argument. I really think that that's done. We're done with Mr. Van Tran.
Goodbye, Mr. Van Tran. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Invitation still stand.
Yes. Thank you.
Have the, this is a city council meeting at a, uh, Jerry Springer show.
Okay, um, may I ask Diana Daubert to come up and answer some questions?
Okay.
If you could appear, thank you.
I'm here.
So we were talking about, this is a whole debate on whether or not we need a, um, permit for such an event as the, uh, Quang Chi Monument, uh, groundbreaking ceremony. Okay, so I'm going to, before I, we, before I ask you some questions regarding, uh, you know, whether there's a, what you said to them, to the foundation? Or we're going to shed light on that in a little bit. But I want to say that, you know, this is a public event. Okay? We gave, um, our permit, shall I say, back in, well, yes, we mentioned, everybody mentioned December ninth. We approved unanimously um, to grant the foundation. I don't know if, if it's a permit or what, okay? But we're not going to talk about, I don't want to misspoke, okay? So I want to mention that the foundation basically on the ninth of June had a private party on our public land. So, you know, not only is that rude, you know, we gave this, this is supposed to be a public. Basically, this is to, to, um, I'm like so upset right now because, you know, I do believe that our public deserves an apology. I mean, I'm, okay, don't even think about me. Don't think about the rest of the council who were not there. Okay? We were not invited. That's, yes. I didn't know anything about it. Worse than that, this is happening, this was happening in my district and I had no clue when somebody asked me, what is that loud music? I said, I don't know. And somebody said, did you forget? Well, my family member. We went to city hall to pick up, um, my council notebook. And my, my family member said, well, what is that loud music? And I, and then it came from Freedom Park. Did you forget an event? And so it was very possible, I thought. So I was frantic and I said, I, I don't think I have any events. So there's an event going on in my district. I knew nothing about. How embarrassing. My constituents were not invited. The public at large, the public, the citizens of the city of Westminster, I'm not talking about just the Vietnamese. Okay? The general public, everyone deserves an invitation. So why is it that this was exclusive to the donors? Okay, and to two council members? And then you had your private party at your home? And then I thought, when I saw the picture of you and while cutting the cake, I thought, oh, they had, they're having an anniversary. And then when I zoom in to look at the cake, it was a commemoration of the groundbreaking day or ceremony. Um, you know, and so it was a, it was privatized. So I thought it was so unfair. I really think our public deserves an apology from the foundation. Okay, so being that this agenda, we're talking about the party. Okay? Um, this party that we were all not invited to, okay, except for the two hundred people. I want to shed light on that night, that day, or maybe the, in April, when, uh, the mayor contacted, um, where she? Diana Daubert. Diana, you were contacted.
I'm here.
And did you, did you say to anybody that they did not need, um, anybody, the foundation? Or that includes the two council members, uh, mayor and council member, Chief Charlie? That they did not need a, a permit? Did they contact you?
Never asked about it. Yeah, I, I was never asked about a permit. I was asked, uh, if there were any other events scheduled at the park on June, June ninth, June sixth, sorry. Uh, yes.
And what did you say?
So. What did I say? I, I, well, first I had to look at the calendar to see wh- what that looked like. And we had been informed that the, uh, Vietnamese community, Southern California, had been out there, um, doing their monthly flag raising ceremonies, which consisted of fifteen to twenty people. And although we weren't permitting because of COVID and related to the pandemic, um, group, people were, were still allowed to use our parks. So.
Okay, you say people, were you, were you, when you say people or were you, uh, in the tune of two hundred people? I mean, the flag raising people?
No.
Prior to that event?
No.
How many would you say they had?
No.
When I asked you, I believe you said about twenty.
About twenty for the flag raising, correct?
Yes. So they had twenty and this group had two hundred. And so, okay, so could you define for me, when would you need a permit and when you wouldn't need a permit? That way everybody is on the same page. And if we, we could just remind our council members, when would you need a permit? And when would you not need a permit?
Well, typically anything over a hundred people, which includes amplified sound, um, and, uh, with the impact to our parks would require especially that permit.
Okay.
Have there been events at our parks?
Amplified sound, so the flag raising people with twenty, twenty people? And they did, they've been doing this since you, you mentioned to me two thousand and four, correct?
Yeah, since the park was built. They've been doing it.
Did they have amplified sound?
Yes, so it. Well, they use a personal, they use a personal, uh, uh, personal sound system where if, if, I mean, people are allowed to play a radio. Yes, battery operated.
Battery operated. That's very different than electrically operated, right? Amplified sound. So what about, uh, if you, if you don't have a permit, are you allowed to have, usually is the restroom open?
No, we weren't opening park restrooms.
So you wouldn't have electricity? No restroom and no electricity, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Whereas this particular party, they had two hundred people, they have amplified sound, they have the restroom. Who opened the restroom? Who turned on the electricity? That is public, pe- public money. Okay? That's, then the public was not invited. How can that be fair? So who turn on electricity to ask for a permit?
It, it was, it was requested by, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Nguyen to turn, to open the restrooms and to turn the electricity on and to make sure the kiosk was open. And, and I've, I've accommodated requests in the past, so that wasn't typically, uh, you know, uh, unreasonable request.
Did you feel, however? Pressure? Did you feel some pressure? Did you feel pressure?
No, I, I.
Coming because the question or the the request came from a council member with some pressure to perform some, some pressure to open the restroom, turn on the electricity when you knew you, you weren't supposed to?
I was accommodating a request, uh, of a council member. I mean, I would try to do that for each and every council member if I could.
I never asked you. I never asked you to turn on the electricity at Freedom Park or open the restroom. I'm going to have two hundred friends over. I never asked you to do that. So, okay, knowing what you know now, what would you do differently in the future? I don't want you to get pressured and turn around sewer city.
Mm-hmm. Well, in the future, I mean, it, it was apparent that all the council was not involved in the event. Thus the reason why we, we build them for the requests that they asked for.
But did you know that all the members, all the city members were not involved in the event, were not invited? Did you know?
No, I did not know that.
Were you under the assumption that we were, that it's a city hosted event? Really?
Yes.
Okay. Well, uh, you know, for, for this agenda, all I want to say is that, you know, the foundation owes the public an apology. I don't need an apology. I know this is, you know, really, really, uh, I mean, this is unacceptable, okay? To carry on a private party on public land and the electricity is paid for by our taxpayers and, you know, the restroom, the people, the employees are all public employees. That's not acceptable. And, you know, so I'm, I, I don't know what else to say except, okay, um, I want to move forward. I, you know, I, I want to bring this up. I want to, you know, make my comments. But, um, and this, this really leads to, to, to an agenda request. I'm going to agendize something, but let's finish item five point four first.
So, uh, can I have a saying? I think that I listened to all the council member and now I think I'd like to, uh, I'd like to respond.
I have a, I have something to say before, um, before.
Can I speak? I think that I respect all the members of the city council. I think this is, this is the time that I would like to speak.
I was speaking before you did, mayor. Yeah, just quick question, real quick to Diana Daubert. Real quick. Uh, Diana, can I, can I make a member of the public make that same request? Same request that Vice Mayor, uh, Charlie Nguyen did as far as opening the bathrooms and turning the electricity on?
There's a process that the public could request that through.
No, but the, would you have turned it, would, like, turned it, maybe you did it the same way?
Um, i- if it was possible and if the appropriate elements were, I mean, in the past, has there been a special event permit that's been approved that the applicant did not request electricity? That has happened. So I did receive a call. We did accommodate that request. But that's not the typical way requests happen. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Good enough?
Yeah, I think, I think the council member should go to the same, should have the same, go through the same route as a member of the public for, for something like this. All right. Thank you. Go ahead, mayor. Sorry.
All right, uh, I want to, uh, I want to speak for the record. The event was not more than a hundred people. I mean, like the reporter, he could, uh, say whatever he want, but it was not more than a hundred people. And I think there is no conflict of interest and, and the foundation already paid for all the costs. And also I don't believe that the foundation owe any apology to anyone. I think that we all received a letter from Mister Van Tran. He submitted a letter to explain the circumstance. And I think that the foundation, you know, they want to give a council an update. So I don't believe foundation owe public any apology.
I, I'd like to, I, I'd like to add to that. You know, I've been addressed, you know, the, uh, misunderstanding or whatever, the allegation from, um, uh, council member Doe. And now I'd like to respond directly to, uh, council member Ho. First of all, uh, Mister, uh, council member Doe said that, you know, it's two hundred people, you played the tape. Unfortunately, I don't have the tape here, but every time that I announce on, on, even on the newspaper and on the, uh, uh, on the media that I came up, it's never a hundred people at any one time. Okay, now you heard it from one of the, one of many, um, medias reporting. And you could, you said that it's, you believe that it's two hundred people. Were you there counting the people? Were you there to make the certain assumption that it was two hundred people? That's number one. Now, as far as the, the, that, yeah, for the, the event before us, who said that is twenty people? I can assure you, and I can sort of the picture, that at least thirty or forty or fifty people there. Okay? If you want me to approve through that, I will. But there's no need for that. You can ask those people who have that event on that day. Now, as for the sound system, the same man who did the sound system for the groundbreaking event, did the sound system for that event. Were you there? I was there. I saw that. If you want to, you can talk to Mister Kang Nguyen to see if he's the one who provide the sound system for both group. Okay, as far as the reserve, I just don't know. I just think that, that, you know, there is a ve- event. We even on our, um, on the foundation, uh, announcement, you heard that from the, the, the tape that you played. The foundation is only because of the pandemic. We don't want to invite anyone else besides those are involved. So that's why, that's why you see that is publicly announced that because of the, 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 the pandemic. Now, the call that I placed to, uh, that I, that I had with, um, with Diana Daubert, it's just, I never did this before at the, at the, uh, you know, any event at the, uh, uh, the Freedom Park. So when I, when I know that if the, uh, the event is less than hundred people, there is no permit required. I asked if we can have their electricity turned on? Yes, I did. But we, the foundation paid for it. It's not free. I am asking, and the, 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 the price were given, and I said, go ahead and do it. I, we, the, the foundation agreed to pay for it. We are not taking advantage of anything. So as far as the loud music, you know that already. The same man provide at two events. The other event go before the groundbreaking event. They used the sound system provided by the same man. So if you were not there, I don't, I don't, you know, uh, I don't have any issues that you making your assumptions. But the fact is still the fact. I am giving you all the facts.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I did not hear their event because their event may not have been loud. But I'm sure, I know that you asked if you could have, you could move that guy up, his event up, and you refused. So maybe your guy, as a matter of fact, I'm sure your guy installed the, um, you know, the, um, amplified sound, um, you know, in the morning. And so I'm sure it was there and I'm sure it was made available. But the thing is that normally they've been doing this for since two thousand and four with no electricity, no restrooms.
I don't know. For the record, uh, I, I also want to speak, uh, for record that respond to council member Ho calling the event as a party. I'm sorry to say that it's not a party. That is an event, you know, that is a small event that a foundation, you know, we want to honor all the supporter. That's all. It's not a party.
May, may I say something?
You know, it's, uh, we were not there. Yeah, you're right, Vice Mayor Wynn. We were not there. We heard a lot about it. We heard Ngalo, he's a Vietnamese, um, YouTuber, uh, up in San Jose. He's a your major supporter and he's also, I heard that he's also on your, the, the Quan Chi Monument Board Director, Member. He say it's on, on, on the, um, on the, um, that YouTube channel that, uh, more than, um, two hundred people show up. Okay, which is based on what he's, he's saying, and he's one of your board member. So there's no reason for him to lie. So I don't know who's lying.
Is, is that, let's say, let, let's say that he said two hundred people. Is that two hundred people at any one time? Or two hundred people?
Well, you know what?
Did he say?
You know, where you go? Well, you know, what the thing is, uh, we don't know. Okay, we see photo and it look more than a hundred peoples. Just a second, just a second, you know, and it, it's just, it's, there's a lot of question looking at that, that particular event. I mean, you know, it's, it's, we go against the state, uh, health safety protocol that limit the large gathering of public. And the city implement that regulation that we do not issue any permit for any event at that Freedom Park. And yet, the, even though the, the city council approved that project, the groundbreaking words, uh, whereas, uh, I don't understand, was in such a hurry to, um, to, to be happened in, in during the pandemic. Um, and, and none, none of the city council, uh, I mean, you know, except you and the, um, the mayor, Chisai, were the only one, uh, there, um, the rest of the city council was not informed. I mean, you have an opportunity to ask for a permit, but you did not, but you just gone contact the city and ask them to, the city staff and ask them to turn on the, uh, the electric city, open the restroom and do other stuff. But you direct the city staff to do things for you. Uh, I, I'm not sure that the, the city employee ever contacted, notified that to, uh, the, the city manager. I'm sure they have to because city manager is a boss. I'm not sure the city manager was aware of that, um, man, but, you know, in, in light, in light of this event, now was like, we hear so many objections to this, um, monument. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, new detail coming out that, that, and this, the complete interest, you, you were part of the, uh, organizer, you and then the mayor were part of the organizer and then you put it on the agenda and you voted for it and without disclose the information to this majority city council. Okay, now we have, um, none of the, um, veteran group in, in, uh, in this area, immediate area, Orange County, support that project. Okay, some individual, all right, and only the majority of supporter are from the north, northern California, from San Jose. Uh, the, 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 none of the, um, um, south, um, veteran group supported the project. And I don't, I don't understand, you know, why this is, this is, this is a, it's an event that, that should uniting, uniting the, um, community, but yes, it's creating such a division at, at the scale that that I, 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 I could not believe. Okay, you know, you're talking about community activists, you're involved with the community, you serve the community. Well, do thing that, that united community. Don't do anything to divide the community. We have enough of it already. Okay, so right now, there's so many people, you know, I'm, I'm no exception, just like council member, um, because woman Ho and council, um, and Carlos Manzol. I guess so many people who calling me, asking me to support it or against it. I don't know what's, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm just right in the middle right now. It's, uh, should we do thing that united the, the community or we should continue this division? I mean, you know, the city is surviving on the one percent cell tax, which is sunset in twenty twenty-two. We are in dying need of financial. But yet we worry about all these little things where this can, you know, the council should not be very involved with this. The council should be focusing on, uh, move, you know, getting additional funding for the city because the, the, we might, might not, uh, get that, uh, cell tax continue after twenty twenty-two. We don't know that. But we look at the city council, we just worry about building more monument. Yeah, we should, we can support that because that's community project. Well, we should not be actively involved in that. We should actively looking for source of money. Do thing that motivating the city to move forward, to generate revenue. We shouldn't get not, get, you know, spend hour on talking about this. We should not. We need to stop.
If I may ask the city attorney something?
I, I'd like to respond. I mean, like, I mean, like, I totally disagree whatever council member Do said. The foundation had been reached out many, many times with many different group. And the foundation got, you know, a lot of support from many different organization. And all the group opposing the foundation that you mentioned, they associate with the same group. Last year, they tried to recall myself and, and other two council member. And until now, I truly believe the foundation continue to do the reach out. Councilmember Do, you more than welcome to sit down with any board member if you wish to get more information, to get more education about the board. I think the board, they tried to reach out, but the issue, the other group, they didn't want it. So, I mean, that's not an issue about the foundation. And I, I totally disagree with whatever you said. I mean, like, I, I mean, I'm not the one who want to bring this up, but if you have a question, you need to go to talk to the board. I, I think the foundation, it can really open, open to any concerns, any question.
Okay, may I ask the city attorney some questions, please? Um, city attorney, um, exactly what did we approve on December ninth relating to this monument? Did we approve a contract or a permit or what did we approve and could you explain?
Well, I did not handle that many. I did go back and look at the staff report from that. I did watch the video from it last week sometime. Um, it was a little confusing. I think it could have been clear. Um, I did just, I've got it here. You've got the minutes. I heard Christine saying she has the minutes. What I saw in, in what is in the staff report in the video from what I recollect was that basically the mayor brought forward an item and asked for the council to approve it, which in a sense makes it a city project. There's no contract that was attached. There was no permit that was asked for. It was in a sense saying, city council, would you authorize the installation of this monument in the park? Um, and that this nonprofit would pay for it and that there would be no city funds involved and that city staff would coordinate with the nonprofit to make sure that the proper permits were obtained. But in a sense, and once it's installed, it becomes a city asset in the park. That's what I recollect.
Okay, so before we talk about installing and who's gonna be, um, who owns it or anything like that, I just wanna know that when you say, so, um, from other, from my, um, experience of other monuments, the contracts were given to the group, right? To the foundation, whatever foundation is in charge, correct? But this.
You're, you're talking about the other monuments?
Yeah.
I don't believe the other monument have any.
So when we, when the mayor brought this on as a city, so now it's a city project. It's a city project, correct? Are you sure of that?
It's not a city project.
To be, it's to be constructed by the nonprofit at the cost of the profit. And then at the end, it doesn't say anything about, I think with the other monuments, I don't believe there was contracts between the city either on the other ones. I think it was all handled very much the same. We basically authorized it and then they raised the money, they would install it. They would do contracts, the nonprofit would do a contract with the, um,
The nonprofit.
Probably asked Jake that question, but they would do a contract with the contractor to actually construct it and install it. And then once it was installed, we would take over the maintenance of it, which, I mean, it's our asset, it's our park. I, Jake, I think Jake's on.
That's correct.
City project, who gets to? Who gets to build this monument, correct?
The foundation build a monument, this is not a city project.
Is this a city project question?
We're, we're authorizing, we're authorizing a nonprofit to come in and build this monument on city land and then in a sense donate it to the city once it's installed. I think that would probably be the best way to frame it. Would, is that correct, Jake, the way you would see it?
Yes, so like the previous monuments that the, the private group or a committee that come in and coordinated with the contractor directly and make all the payments to the contractor directly. The city staff just assisting the group to go through the permitting process and all the city process and make sure it done properly. And, um, you know, for sp- for example, let's say they have to submit plan through the building. We will make sure that they have, they follow through the process and get the building permit for it and also get the enclosure permit for the public works to construct something in the public right away.
Okay, let me ask you then, uh, so, so once we approve for the project to move forward, uh, back in December for this particular monument, December ninth, are you saying that we're now sitting ducks that we have to, they can do whatever? And then we'd have to, at, at what point could we cancel this contract? And when? What are some of the stipulations?
I think this is not on agenda. We have to be careful.
I just wanna ask about the agenda. I mean, what we approved. You, you tell me if I'm, if I need to agendize to talk about this.
Can we rescind it?
Can we rescind it?
I wanna understand the contract, what we signed.
Hold on, if the council want to continue to talk about that issue, we should not discuss in this meeting. That's all I want to say.
All right, so move along so we can agendize. I would like to, um, approve, I would like to receive and file item number five point four.
Well, be- before, before we make any, um, decision on that or vote on that, I, I know it's, it's gone by already, but I'd like to respond to, uh, council member Do's accusations. Okay, he kind of lecture that, you know, the city needs to have concentration, you know, cause we need to concentrate on go get the money, make them, you know, get the money to, for the city because that's what we need. Let me tell you, I did above and beyond that. It's not like you. Let me ask, let me, I, I'm, I'm not only doing for the city, but I'm also doing it for the community. And let me tell you, I have not missed any council meeting in the duration of three years that I, I started with this council. How many you missed? Okay, you don't have to answer that. Now.
None.
You said you were not.
None, zero.
I'm not finished. Oh, come on, come on. We'll take, we'll, we'll, we'll get it. Okay, now, let me ask you. You, you said you're not there. I'm glad that you, you, you admit that you're not there. And if you are not there, let me tell you what happened. Don't accuse people, okay? You said that I already explained to you that I did not join the foundation until late April. And you still accuse that the two members are, are in the foundation and voted for the items. Once, once again, I make it clear to you, that's not, that was not the case. Secondly, the June sixth event is happened during the yellow tier. And doesn't that yellow tier, you can gather as long as not under, it's not over a hundred people. And that's from the city standpoint, if it's not under, if it's not over hundred people, we don't need a per- permit. Now, you also mentioned that why don't we get permit? Because at the time that, you know, the city is not, uh, uh, ready to give out permit, that's wrong. In the staff report, please read the staff report and also, uh, Diane, the honor al- already read it for us again. There are two special event that were approved. One is the Westminster Mall parking lot and the other one is a movie night at Mosatika Park. But they were postponed until October seventeen twenty twenty, should be twenty twenty-one. Now, you read the, the staff report. Why you accuse people for the things that they don't do? Stop doing that, council member Do. Read the staff report, get the fact and share with the people.
Well, okay, you done. Let me respond to that. I talked to city staff. When I have the veteran group complaining that our city do not issue permit for Freedom Park. And they accusing us to issue permit to the Vietnamese veteran. Not the American veteran. That's why I have to contact city staff to confirm and they were told exactly, there's no permit issued at that Freedom Park. So, you know what, do me a favor and do everybody a favor, you know, stop yelling and accusing people like this, you know? And, and, and it's your secretary, I mean, you know, the, the foundation secretary, Ngalo, you know, he say, he say, he say on, on the YouTube channel, they was so proud that during the pandemic, but two hundred people show up at that park. I, you know, I, I, I didn't make it up, I wasn't there. Just a second, just a second. No, let's, let, let, I mean, we have enough of this. This is a circus. Yeah, this is a circus. Let's move on.
And let me tell you one more thing, one more thing. From the, the Huang Sa Monument, I was on board at the time. I would, I approved the project. And while at that time, I know that ca- a custom, uh, look, uh, it was at that time that Vice Mayor Ho and Mayor Tretta was on board. Were you and me got invited to the groundbreaking event and the unveiling event? None, both of the event.
Yes, you, yes, you did.
I did not. I did not.
Yes, you were, you were there. Yes.
No, I was not. I did not get invited. Okay, you prove it to me, all right? And were you invited, Mitter? Did you make any, a, 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 anything out of that? Yes, you said it right. It should be, shouldn't be a big deal. Just because you want to make it big deal.
We were not on the board.
And we still, we still, we still have a lot of things to do. I agree with that. Then with these thing, let iron it out and let it go.
Well, we don't, as a council, as a council, we have the right to recommend you and the, the mayor for for conducting an event in the public park without permit as required by city ordinance.
Sir, one more time.
As have been added.
The event is less than one hundred people and we make that in our state, uh, announcement. And therefore, it's not a requirement to get a permit.
Okay.
I mean, I made a motion. Could we move along and?
Can I say real quick in defense of the American Vietnam veterans? I'm gonna ask you guys, since this is a such, uh, it's, it's, it's been, it's being sold to the public as this is a great event and it's, um, it's representative of all the, all the Westminster residents. Was, was the Vietnam, American Vietnamese, the American Vietnam veterans invited to participate in any of these events at all? Can somebody answer that question?
I'd like to respond that I'm really. I'd like to respond that I'm really sure that our foundation will invite everyone, any association. And the time of unveiling of the monument.
I'm talking about to the point.
What?
Up to this point, has it, have they been invited to anything up to this point?
The foundation had been reaching out to all of the association. They been doing that and they continue to do that, sir.
So they have.
Yes.
They're telling me they're, they haven't. No, it's, it's ridiculous, you know, I, I. I did too. They've been excluded uh, to be at every, everything, they've been excluded for participating at this at all, so.
Eli, you want to raise some kind of question?
I'm asking.
Want to, uh, no, 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 hold on, hold on. Okay, you asking, yes, you are, you more than welcome to ask, but. You know, the person who willing to give you an answer is Mr. Van Tran, he's a chairperson and you guy wouldn't allow him to answer. That's the issue.
If you and you, uh, mayor and vice mayor reported to board directors, you should know. People too, yeah, so.
That's why I tried to explain to you, the foundation had been reaching out to all the association. The issue for, you know, all the association here, they want to sit in the board. I mean, I be tried to reaching out to them, the board had, the foundation had asking them. To be member of advisor of the, of the foundation.
You know what?
I mean, I don't want to discuss about that.
I, I agree.
Discuss that, I, I'm gonna agenda something, please.
Oh, let's vote.
I need, I still need a second, I have a motion, okay, sir, so that was.
What's the motion, what's the motion again, please?
Receive and file? Yeah, so, motion made by Councilmember Doe, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Ho seconded by Councilmember Doe to receive and file. Okay, roll call vote. Uh, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Hey, motion carries five to zero.
Alright, so we uh, move to the next item. Item five point five, resolution of the rising the annual display of the pride. Latin support of Pride LGBTQ Month. City Club.
Yeah, so the, so this was a crest, a request made from Councilmember Monzo to place an item on the agenda. Uh, considering a resolution in support of flying the inclusion or LGBTQ plus flag annually in June beginning twenty twenty two. Uh, so basically, uh, this resolution um, authorizes the annual display of that flag to commemorate. Pride Month, um, and at this time, Councilmember Monzo is just asking for. Basically, just asking for a direction, not direction, but for council support in this. And if it is approved, staff will just need direction regarding council's preference in locations. Um, and staff will determine the feasibility of flying that flag uh, with the current equipment and flag poles or other alternative. Methods, um, if required, uh, as far as the cities that currently support something like this, cities of Anaheim, Eliso Viejo, Costa Mesa. Garden Grove, Huntington Beach, Irvine, Laguna Beach and Santa Ana. Support the LGBTQ plus community by declaring June as Pride Month. And or flying the flag at City Hall or an alternate city facility.
Yes, thank you, Christine, uh, yes, I hope the uh, city councils, uh, member, uh, supports this, uh. I think it's long overdue, as you can see, we have a lot of. Need for unity here in our city and I hope that this is just the beginning of uh, uh. Us trying to unify our city, um, as you know, the. Uh, the rainbow flags, this, it's a simple way. To show that we support our LGBT community, but it's a, it's a powerful statement as well. People who identify as LGBT are still subjected to great discrimination. We must stand against all forms of discrimination. O- over eighteen million Americans identify as LGBT. Just since two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty, we're sixty percent increase, that's a lot, and this is growing. The more that we show support, the more, especially our young community, the more comfortable they feel. About uh, being who they are. The pride flag is also a symbol of freedom. It's a freedom to be who you are. It's a symbol of love too, it's a symbol to love who you wanna love. It's a symbol of peace. It's a symbol of peace and harmony, to live within peace and harmony with your neighbors. It's, it's a symbol of the struggle for civil rights, the struggle that, that they fought for such a long time. Like, uh, our city clerk has said, let's join. Our neighboring cities of San Ana, Garden Grove, Huntington Beach, Fullerton, Costa Mesa, Irvine, Anaheim. Laguna Beach, Eliseo Viejo. This show, this show that, this shows our community that we stand in solidarity with the, with their LGBT community. And we say there is no place for discrimination here in Westminster. As you know that. Uh, in the past year or so. There's been a lot of hate going around in, in our, in our, in our community. In, in our state, in our country. This been going on since that when the pandemic started. And we stood, and I was proud of Westminster that we stood and we said, there is no place for. Uh, Asian hate here in Westminster. Just continue that theme and, and show that we support our LGBT community. And, and it's, and it's, and it's, and it's time, it's time that we, that we, that we take a stand. So I hope that the city council can support this. And, and it's time that we do something, so hopefully, hopefully you support this. Thank you. Now, that, in that I to make a motion. Motion to approve this resolution. Uh, to fly the LGBT flag, the pride flag every, every June. As recommended. Second it.
Alright, we have a motion and second, roll call vote.
So that's to adopt a resolution of the mayor and city council, the city of Westminster authorizing the annual display of the pride flag to commemorate LGBTQ plus Pride Month.
Before we vote, can I say something?
Please.
Yes, okay, I do believe in freedom of speech, freedom of expression for each person. But as a city. And I, as a city, I believe we need to. Think of our city as a whole. Okay, and um. So I, I basically, um. You know, I understand and I know, um, council, um, councilmember Monzo, um. You know, is looking out for the LGBTQ um, community and, and I. I am in support of the LGBT community. But we cannot display a flag for everything we support. On our, a community property, that is. And because our community property is paid for by our tax dollars. And um, I am, it's, you know, we, we, we have to choose what we're going to display and so. The display of three flags right now. The American flag, the California flag, the POW flag. And um, you know, if we have our city flag, then we include our city flag, that will be the fourth flag. So, you know, otherwise, if we approve this and we'll have to approve more flags. So I, I, I've read a lot of, and I'm sure you have too. You know, comments people send in and um, I think without, they, and I appreciate everybody's comments. So um, it is a, a very difficult decision for me to make. But um, I, I think we should just have the two flags at this time.
Until we have, we don't need a, we have our current flag pole and it just, it's one, it's like you, like you heard from other resident state. It's approved in our state of California, it's to, I, to celebrate the Pride Month. So it's not just here in certain cities, it's the whole state of California. And many cities fly it on this, an existing flag pole underneath. Either their city flag or underneath the state flag. Um, so it's nothing new, so I mean. We, we wouldn't be putting out, there's no fiscal impact, really, there's no really extra equipment to, to fly.
No, I, I know, I understand that, but I think that, 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 that I, I encourage everybody who believes in. You know, they need to express themselves and they could do any, you know, just like we celebrate Juneteenth, we celebrate, um, you know. The Republic of Vietnam Day, Armed Forces Day, but we don't fly a flag here. We fly a flag in front of our house or in our, the community that we, you know, uh. That we have our, our events or whatever it is that, you know. Wherever we, we have, we do our thing, but definitely not on, on uh. You know, city property, so that's, that's all I, you know, that's the part that I'm, I, I feel that uh. We have to be careful because now we're gonna be flying a lot of different flags and everybody's gonna suggest that. We fly their flag and then what would happen, we can't be uh, doing that, so. You know, that's for me anyway, so I understand.
I really wish you were to support this. Um, our, we have a lot of LGBT, like you say, over eighteen million Americans and growing. And like you say, yeah, that's one of the. Growing suicide rates amongst young people, not being, not being accepted, being persecuted. Being persecuted, you know, for, for who they are. If you ever been a victim of racism. Uh, being uh, growing up. I don't know if any of you have, but I know I have, my family has. You will know, unless you've been a victim, you will know what these people were being uh. Were being gay or being somebody who's been a victim of discrimination feels like. And, and, and if you haven't, I'm, I'm, I'm happy for you, but if you have, you know exactly how they feel. And growing up. We have, my family has and it's not, and I vowed. I vowed to never ever treat somebody the way we were treated. And I made sure my kid, I, I taught, teach my kid, I taught my kids that you make sure you respect everybody. Make sure you treat people the way you wanna be treated. And that's why we continue to live here in Westminster because of the diversity here in the city. And that's why this issue is really important. That's why I make sure I teach my children about all the different ethnicities. And, and, and I, and I don't. And I make, I don't ever want anybody to go through. Uh, what something that we went through. And that's why I hated when this, during a pandemic, how. All the Asian hate was going on and it's something that nobody should ever go through. All the attacks that were happening to just innocent victims for, for no. For just senseless, senseless reasons, nobody should ever go through that. And for, this is something that. That's just a, a simple but a powerful way to show that we're standing in solidarity. With their LGBT community and, and we're with, we're with them and. That is not gonna, that discrimination is not gonna happen here in Westminster. And I would really wish that you, that this council would support it. And. Anyway.
Alright, so I believe we have a motion and a second on this item, so uh, roll call vote please.
And this is a motion for adopting the resolution in support, uh, roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Abstaining.
Okay, Councilmember Ho?
No.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
No.
And Mayor Ta?
No.
Okay, that motion failed with council members, the Councilmember Doe abstaining. And then council members Ho, Vice Mayor Nguyen, Mayor Ta voting no.
Alright, so uh. Next item. Six point one, red, resolution reaffirming proclamation number twenty twenty. Uh, that's zero one and resolution number four nine eight three would declare the system of a local emergency.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for this item.
Yes, motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Doe, and that's to adopt. A resolution entitled Resolution to the Mayor City Council of the City of Westminster, reaffirming proclamation number twenty twenty dash zero one and resolution numbers four nine eight three. Which declared the existence of a local emergency, uh, roll call vote, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item, so one point one, we pass for on street disabled parking at one four three eight two Olive Street.
With the approval.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion and second for this item. Roll call vote.
That's gonna be a motion uh, made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Councilmember Monzo to adopt a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster. Providing for the installation of disabled parking restrictions at one four three eight two Olive Street, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero.
Yes, so next we have common from city council agency member, uh, I think that. My majority of city council, we already approve the way we placing an item, so there is no need for request for item. So right now is a, is a time for council member, so would like to go.
We could agenda something.
Okay, that's fine. Yes, you do one.
I guess I could go first.
Okay. And any report from maybe one, two, three, four? Required, yes.
I don't have any report, one, two, three, four, report. Okay, so for me, um, this past week, I've been, um, I think I've. Been speaking to um, our general public, a couple of um. Groups, and I'm really not done speaking to everybody yet, uh, just as long as they wanna speak to me and. You know, I will uh, make time to uh, schedule a time to meet with them. So um, what I wanna do is put on the agenda, I'd like to add an item to agenda, next agenda to discuss. The status of this Quan Chi monument of Sid Goldstein Freedom Park, whether or not. We should modify, we should delay, or we should terminate. Based on the comments we heard tonight, it appears, and then, then also comments that have sent in, people have sent in. That maybe we, we proceeded too quickly to approve this agenda on December ninth. There are important groups in the city that probably should have been consulted concerning this monument before we move forward. We need to know more information about what exactly is being installed, when and where it will be installed. Who is paying for it and what would be the message that is being conveyed. Do we have, do we need more community input on this? It's really important for us to get this right. And that we have all of the parties who, who have an interest in this event provide their input. So this is what I want to agendize for next time to discuss.
A second. All right, we have the, we have the motion and second for councilmember Ho request.
All right. So motion second, uh, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
No.
Mayor Ta?
No.
The motion carries three to two to add that to the agenda.
Okay. Anything else? Councilmember Ho?
Um, yes, I, I would like, I don't know if, um, this is for a city attorney and I guess, um, you know, my question earlier, I'm not sure if, uh, you would like to, should I agendize or would you hold that contract or whatever it was we approved on December ninth and be prepared to speak about it? And just any, any and all contracts associated with it? And be, just if you could like do a deep dive and see if there's any, do we need to, uh, for us to contract out a, a, a firm to build, to build this monument, do we need to open it up for our, our fee? Or do we contract the same people, same company? Um, so this is just, um, do, do I need to agendize that, uh, question or could I just ask you to some research and bring it back?
Uh, we can have that as part of that, yeah, the discussion. I think, I think that's under the same item, really.
Under the same item, yeah.
And, um, yeah, that, and then also, um, you know, could you do some research and see if being that we have a mayor and one council member on the board of directors? See if there's any violation, if that's cool, that's not cool, that's, you know, uh, is that any of our business? Would you be ready to talk about that? I mean, I like to hear some official comment, because I don't think you, you said anything today.
I think, I didn't, I think for that, I like the city attorney to answer part of record right now.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think when the issue first came up, I look, I was concerned about it. I did do some research on it. Um, and that's when I learned one, it's, you're dealing with the five oh one C three and that's, that's unique under the law. Um, because when you look at the Political Reform Act, they specifically define like, uh, when you're a board member, wait, when you look under the term, you know, board member, um, or business entity is the term actually, they exclude nonprofits. So if you're a board member of a nonprofit, it doesn't count. And also income, when you look under the definition of income, it says, you know, income from a five oh one C three doesn't count as income. Um, when you look at ten ninety, which deals with contracts, there's an exception in there for members of a nonprofit five oh one C three, um, as long as they're non compensated and as long as the, it's disclosed in the record that they are members of that board, then they are exempt. So that's basically what I found, that's, you know, you, you can call it technicalities or whatever, but that is what the law.
But let's say they are able to sit, sit on the board and there's no conflict of interest there. What about their right to vote uh, for the agenda?
Yeah, so my, they were not on the, they were not on the board until sometime after. Um, I, that's the least, I mean, I didn't verify.
Now that they're on the board and we've got an agenda and I just agendized it for next time, how does that affect? Um,
I, in this situation, I would say that they can actually, believe it or not, still participate because it's common for, uh, councilmembers to be on, again, non compensated five oh one C three, so they cannot be compensated, they cannot, it must be a five oh one C three. And they, um, uh, they must disclose in the public record that they're a board member. So that, in that sense.
I want you to also do some research and see, because it doesn't, to me, that's, I, I, I don't, I mean, I really think that there's, um, okay, so, so.
Can we talk about it next week?
Yeah, no, I just wanna, I just want you to do some research and, and here's the thing, is that you're telling me that it's okay, but what I know is that, let's say, I know that they applied on the first of December, I don't know the exact date, but then, okay, so I could apply on the first of December and then seven days later, I'm going to say, hey, I'm, I get to be on the board because I apply for five oh one C three. Well, you know, there's no guarantee that you're going to get it. Okay, so if I want to get around that law, then that's what I would do. I would apply today and then tomorrow I'm going to say, hey, I, I'm on a five oh one C three board. It's a, you know, foundation is nonprofit. So I'd like you to look more into that and see would, would that need to be approved? Would I have to be granted? You know? Would, would I have to be granted the five oh one C three or would I have, or could I be pending? My foundation could be like pending. I just applied yesterday. Now tomorrow I'm going to join this and I'm going to be on the board and I have voting rights. It doesn't make sense to me that they would have laws like that that allows you to go around it and it's too blatant that, and people are going to, I don't think people are going to make laws like that. So if you could like look into that, that would be great for our discussion.
Okay, I can do that.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? I, I don't think so. That's it for me.
All right. So any other council member, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, I, I can.
On hand, please, yes.
Um, first, I want to ask, um, we had some about three or four, um, residents called about the, some, well, some crime over at the Westminster Village, uh, community. I wanted to see if, uh, if we can talk to our chief accomplice, maybe if we can have some patrolling or somebody that are, whoever's in charge of that area, if he can and make sure they get some patrolling going on over there, do something to get some, look into that for that area.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and council members and Councilmember Monzo to address that concern, yes. Uh, our staff is aware of those complaints and we are uh, configuring, uh, different methods regarding extra patrol and including the public outreach with neighborhood watch meetings, which would be appropriate considering the configuration of that, uh, uh, multi dwelling, uh, massive unit.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty tight in there. There's a lot of hiding spots in there, yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Um, and next, um, I think it's really important that we, for that Freedom Park going forward, I think it's, it'd be really smart for us to start a, a committee for Freedom Park. Um, I want to, I want us to establish a committee for that park, so.
I think there's a committee.
No, I don't, it's not an active one. There was one initially for many, one for the initial start of it. But I was informed that there isn't one, there isn't currently one now. But I, I think what's happening now, it's really important that we hear how the community, that we involve the community, that we, whatever happens there, we, we need to have a voice for, for, for what happens there. I think it's, I think we need to, it'd be really important for us to start a commit, a committee there. Um, a moratorium on anything that happens there into this community's committee is established. I think it's also something that we need to look into. So my, my motion is to um, agendize starting a committee then. Our next agenda item.
I have a question for the city attorney. I thought that, uh, when we established a ad hoc committee is just apply for a particular project, not apply in general for, for controlling of, uh, the, the, you know, in general. I think it's suit me for particular event. Am I correct on that, please?
Well, what I'm hearing, uh, Councilmember Monzo asked for is the creation of a, of a committee, not an ad hoc committee, but maybe a formal committee?
Well, it's the same thing. It, it, it's the same thing to me.
Well, an ad, an ad hoc would just be like a, uh, I think as, uh, Councilmember Ho created one as a part of a motion, it's just like two council members uh, for a specific purpose for a limited period of time to look into a specific issue. What I, I hear Councilman Monzo asking for is to create a committee, it could be five people, it could be three people, it could be twenty people that would look into on a regular basis, some issue, some subject matter. In this case, it sounds like Freedom Park. Like if, if somebody wanted to build a monument or to do something in Freedom Park, it'd have to go through this committee and they would provide a recommendation to the council. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Something like that.
Correct, that's exactly what it would be.
So it would be like, like the planning commission has it, has an, you know, an ongoing duty, but it only comes into play when there's planning commission issues. So this committee would only come into play when there's a some kind of, uh, something that needs to be installed in the park.
Well, well, if that's the case, if you, if you refer it like a planning committee or, or a traffic committee, then each of the council should have a member in the committee.
Yeah, so we should, we should agendize this issue and then talk about it, like what the, what this committee should look like. Yeah, that would be something to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's my, uh, one, motion for.
Second.
Thanks.
All right, we have the motion and, uh, second for this request.
Okay, and that's to, uh, look at the creation of a Freedom Park Committee and a moratorium, uh, on all projects for that park. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen, or I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Uh, the other thing I want to, thank you, uh, the other thing I want to say is something that uh, and Vice Mayor, uh, Nguyen pointed this out and during our last meeting, and this was a mistake on my part. Um, I got a little emotional our last meeting and a, and a subject that's, you know, was important to me, I, I saw a need for our city and, and my emotions got to me and, and I and, uh, I was, I promoted the employment of an employee, a city employee in a, in a like, uh, Vice Mayor, no, uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen pointed it out and he was correct that, uh, a council member should never promote the employment of a particular, uh, employee. And that was wrong of me. And it's really important for me to to apologize to the public for that. Um, for my own sanity and my, for me, for me better look at myself in the mirror. So, um, I just thought it was really important for me to do that. So I just want to apologize to the public for that. Um, my emotions got the best of me. So, um, sorry for that. Um, so anyways, thank you. Thank you, staff, again, for all your hard work. Uh, thank you, council for here we got three, three in a row past midnight. So, thank you all. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, can I speak?
Okay, please, please.
Uh, yes, I don't, uh, I don't have any, um, thing for tonight. Um, but I want to mention it to the public, especially to, uh, councilmember Doe. It is my perception, it's my way of expressing when I discuss about the item. And, you know, I am passionate to discuss the item and I want to make my points. And, and that's my nature that when I speak, if you notice that when I speak at the public, I always speak loud. And I am sorry that councilmember look at that as a yelling. And I want to confirm with you that it's not a yelling, even though I'm talking to you, I'm talking right now, is that my nature? And I hope that public look at that as my passion into doing the city works. And I, like I said before, not only that I'm here to do the city, cities work, but I also dedicate myself to do the community when there are a good cause or good project that need to be done and I'm more than happy to lend my hand and help out. That's all I have for tonight, uh. Mayor.
All right, uh, councilmember Doe?
Well, thank you very much. Um, it's been a long night. Um, I just want to say that, uh, I'm excited that we are, um, reopening California. Um, recently Cal OSHA voted that, uh, to allow workers who has been vaccinated, uh, do not have to wear a mask in the workplace. And that's, that's very good news. This has been a long time. This, this has been a long time, uh, for, for us to be, uh, to undergo the suffering with pandemic, so hopefully that we don't have to deal this, with this again in, in the future, so. Um, the city continued to, um, support, uh, outdoor dining, it's, you know, as well as, uh, the, uh, outdoor businesses. Um, I just want to bring up, um, an, an issue that come across last week, uh, there was a, a temple down the street that being vandalized, uh, that was brought to my attention, uh. And, uh, and this is not the first, uh, isolated incident. Things, things has been happening to, uh, temples have been being vandalized in the past in our city. Um, the interesting, when I stopped by in this particular, um, the victims, uh, the, the, this temple, um, what I've learned is that when the, when, once the crime happened to, uh, to a victim, uh, any of us, most of the time, uh, people have a tendency to call someone else other than the police. And, uh, we, we need to understand that we need to program ourselves, we need to educate the public to, number one is something happened to you, a crime happened to you, you need to call the police, call, call nine one one. And, um, and that issue, that, that's exactly what happened, um, the temple, the, the nun who, uh, in charge of the temple called one of the elected official uh, instead of calling the police. And then a few minutes later, and while she waiting for the police to respond, um, you know, she feel that the, uh, the, the temple being vandalized again, that's when she pick up the cell phone, call nine one one and the police, uh, Westminster Police responded immediately and, uh, um, took the, uh, a crime report. So I just want to send this message out to the whole community that, uh, once you, uh, just remember this, when something happened to you, life threatening, or you feel you're being a victim of the crime, um, don't call your friends, don't call your mom, dad, call nine one one and have the police respond uh, im- immediately, um. And hopefully that will, uh, that will, uh, uh, help the police to, uh, respond quicker and, and then, uh, uh, solve the issue for, for you. So, um, I want to say this in Vietnamese real quick, uh, từ mì rôi tớ có được, um, tới cái, 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 tình xã, ở trong thành phố Westminster, họ bị tình xã này bị, ờ, bị phá phết, bị tặc nhất. Tôi nói cái lại, sự cô, ở đó, thì sự cô nói, sự cô gọi một cái người dân cử cho thành phố trước, thay vì bị, thay vì gọi cho cảnh sát, thì tôi có đề nghị của sự cô là phải, trước hết là phải gọi chín một một trước, chứ đừng có gọi những người, những người, ờ, những người khác như mình quen biết, cho nên gọi chín một một trước để cho cảnh sát tới và giúp đỡ mình. Xin cảm ơn. Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you all the council member for your comments. I think it's already late. Uh, so I'd like to adjourn the meeting. And the next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, July fourteen, uh, seven P M. Meeting adjourned.